Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. I have, oh, six thirty-nine. I would've said six thirty-eight. Okay, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. We just stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could remain standing for a moment of silence as we consider the word.
And Mr. Levis, if you could do the safety notifications, please.
In case of an emergency, your exits behind you to your left, to your right, actually outside the building.
Thank you. And Mr. Florio, would you honor us by reading the mission of Coventry Public Schools?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mission of the Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you. And just for the public, the school committee met in executive session at six o'clock for about a half hour or so, and there were two votes taken. Both were unanimous. One was to approve the executive session minutes of nine twenty-three twenty-one and the homeschooling request. There was also a discussion about collective bargaining with the CTA and the SRP. That being said, is there a motion to seal the minutes of our executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the records of the executive session be kept closed pursuant to sections forty-two dash forty-six dash four and forty-two dash forty-six dash five.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair both sides, motion carries, five to zero. Moving on to approval of the minutes of eight thirty-one and nine twenty-three twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of eight thirty-one two thousand twenty-one and September twenty-third two thousand twenty-one as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions or concerns from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair both sides, motion carries, five to zero. Moving on to approval of the minutes of eight thirty-one and nine twenty-three twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of eight thirty-one two thousand twenty-one and September twenty-third two thousand twenty-one as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Any questions or concerns from the committee? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair both sides, motion carries, five to zero. Moving on to the public agenda, the following agenda items are open to public discussion. If there was a vote that's going to be taken on any particular agenda item before I call for the vote, we make a motion before I call for the vote, the public has a chance to weigh in on the subject and then the vote's called. That being said, we can move on to agenda number six, which is the celebration of the Coventry High School Skills USA, including presentation. Hi, welcome. I think, well, we're being, it's being recorded, so not for you to hear.
Hi, everyone.
Hello, hello.
Our mics aren't super loud either.
Hi. Well, thank you for having us here tonight. We're here to talk about our experience of the Skills USA Washington Leadership Institute training that we went to in September. Earl Reed, class chapter advisor, thank you. Blake Studley is our state officer, Skills USA. Ashley Klingberg is a chapter officer and criminal justice student. And Adriana Pike is a culinary arts student and chapter officer. Kayla Kennedy also attended, and she is out here today to share the work. So the girls put together a nice presentation that they would like to take.
Just two minutes.
Well, thank you guys for having us here tonight. September eighteenth through the twenty-second, we went to Washington DC to represent Coventry and Rhode Island to our state legislators and senators.
So as you can see, this is kind of a picture of us as a whole. Skills USA is a nationwide organization. So that's kind of everyone that attended DC that is involved in Skills USA.
How many kids? I can't count them all.
Probably like, yeah, I was gonna say, it was like.
Yeah, it's over twenty-seven. Nice.
It's me, Ashley, and Kayla Kennedy, Mr. Reed, and Ms. Ferguson, all with legislator Ling Javon. And we all had like a wonderful conversation with him and with his backstory about skills USA. For the Washington Leadership Training Institute, our attendees from Coventry were Mrs. Ferguson, our CTE director, Mr. Reed, our criminal justice director, as well as our chapter advisor, Kayla Kennedy, who is a criminal justice student, Ashley Klingberg, who is also a criminal justice student, and me, who is, my name is Blake Studley. I am an advertising, marketing, and design student, and I am also the Skills USA state officer for Coventry High School.
So it consisted of twenty-seven students from Rhode Island. That also includes faculty. There are many schools that also came to Washington DC from Rhode Island. Some include Barerville, Cranston, Davies, East Providence, Providence, Regional, our school Coventry, Regional Career and Technical Center, Saka, and Warwick.
The purpose of WLTI was to develop three essential elements of the Skills USA framework, which is professionalism, communication, and leadership. Professionalism is to demonstrate the ability to create and change through the application of advocacy, best practices, communication, develop communication skills in order to be positive advocate for our school and community. For our leadership, we worked on networking with other students from all over the country to understand how their career and technical education programs work and the importance, and talk with them about the importance of federal funding for our communities and states. We also met with legislators, and I, as a state board member, met with senators to advocate for continued support for our current technical education programs, as well as talk about Perkins funding, which also helps our CTE programs.
So maybe you can see just a few more pictures. We had kind of a legislative meeting before we actually went to the State House to kind of talk about, you know, what kind of questions we get asked and the advice that would be important to bring up. On the right-hand side, you can kind of see us all like prepping to actually go and give our speeches and our framework stories, as well as the left side.
And this picture is Coventry, Canton, and Barerville, all with legislator Ling Javon. So one of our main things as WLTI was seeing what we can take back to our communities and our chapters to improve our chapters and advocate for Skills USA. A few things that Coventry Chapter will be doing. We'll be facilitating leadership trainings with new chapter officers and members. We'll also strengthen the chapter membership at Coventry High School. We want to develop a Coventry chapter at the middle school, Alantron Feinstein, as well as develop career readiness awareness activities and events for our ASFMS and elementary school students, and also organize and implement community service outreach programs.
So what you see here is our statesman award. It's the highest award you win and be awarded in Skills USA. Kayla Kennedy, who is not here with us, myself.
Musical accompaniment.
We all received the statesman award, and to be awarded the statesman award, you had to do a written test, kind of like an interview with our school members, and also an interview with, you know, people that don't know you.
So my name is Blake Studley. I am a graphic design student at the Regional Career and Technical Center at Coventry High School. This past year, I competed in Skills USA for the first time and placed third in the state for ad design. I practiced my leadership skills as well as my professionalism skills at WLTI because I wanted to help lead our state board and help be very professional with our senators so we can really get our point across of what we're advocating for. I met with Senators Reed and Whitehouse while on this trip. She's a criminal justice student. She's been in criminal justice for three years. And what she learned is leadership qualities, teamwork skills, and how to collaborate with others. The impact you can have when you stand up for what you believe in. For fun fact, she's a stateman award winner. She's a silver medalist during the CSI competition last year. She's a representative, representative speaker for the Rhode Island Skills Coventry Chapters during WLTI.
My name is Ashley. Last year, I competed in the state's personal justice, which I play school. And I also, I moved on to compete in nationals. I took silver. And I received an national award for taking silver in nationals. And some of the few things I could take away from WLTI was improved leadership skills, communication, and responsibility.
I'm Adriana Pike. I'm a culinary arts student. I've been in culinary arts for four years now. I learned more about the Skills USA framework. I met people from other states, and I still talk to some people. And I learned communication and responsibility.
I'm Adrianne Pike. I'm a culinary arts student. I competed in a dining room competition for Skills USA last year, and I was a representative. And I've been for Coventry during WLTI this year. I've been in culinary for four years now and part of Skills for four years. I learned more about the Skills USA framework. I met people from other states, and I still talk to some people. And I learned communication and responsibility.
So this is just, you know, a few pictures from the trip that we thought, you know, it's kind of a floor. And you can see Ms. Ferguson riding her electronic scooter.
So WLTI, you know, it was the first couple of days where it was, you know, a lot of work, but they also implemented, you know, sightseeing, so we were able to see a lot of buildings. So I think it was good and well-rounded, the fact that we, you know, were there for business, but we also got, you know, to adventure out a little bit. So this is our recap video. It kind of gives you an idea.
You turn it up, Jim?
Hi, everyone. Hello, hello. I almost want to start singing.
It's not, our mics aren't super loud either.
With like a Frank Sinatra. Hi, well, thank you for having us here tonight. We're here to talk about our experience of the Skills USA Washington Leadership Institute Training that we went to in September. Earl Reed, class. Chapter Advisor, thank you. Blake Studley is our State Officer, Skills USA. Ashley Klingberg is a Chapter Officer and Criminal Justice Student. And Adriana Pike is a Culinary Arts Student and Chapter Officer. Kayla Kennedy also attended, and she is out here today because she had work. So the girls put together a nice presentation that they would like to take.
Just two minutes.
Well, thank you guys for having us here tonight. September 18th through the 22nd, we went to Washington DC to represent Coventry and Rhode Island to our state legislators and senators.
So as you can see, this is kind of a picture of us as a whole. Skills USA is a nationwide organization. So that's kind of everyone that attended DC that is involved in Skills USA.
How many kids? I can't count them all.
Probably like. I was gonna say, it was like.
Yeah, it's over 27. Nice.
Okay. It's, and these photos is me, Ashley, and Kayla Kennedy. Mr. Reed and Ms. Ferguson, all with legislator Lynn Javon. And we all had like a wonderful conversation with him and with his backstory about Skills USA, his framework story.
For the Washington Leadership Training Institute, our attendees from Coventry were Mrs. Ferguson, our CTE Director, Mr. Reed, our Criminal Justice Director, as well as our Chapter Advisor, Kayla Kennedy, who is a Criminal Justice Student, Ashley Klingberg, who is also a Criminal Justice Student, Adriana Pike, who is a Culinary Student, and me, who is, my name is Blake Studley. I am an Advertising Marketing and Design Student, and I am also the Skills USA State Officer for Coventry High School.
So it consisted of 27 students from Rhode Island. That also includes faculty. There are many schools that also came to Washington DC from Rhode Island. Some include Barerville, Cranston, Davies, East Providence, Providence, Regional, our school Coventry Regional Career and Technical Center, Saka, and Warwick.
The purpose of WLTI was to develop three essential elements of the Skills USA Framework, which is professionalism, communication, leadership. Professionalism is demonstration ability to create and change through that application of advocacy, best practices, communication, develop communication skills in order to be positive advocate for our school and community.
For leadership, we worked on networking with other students from all over the country to understand how their career and technical education programs work, and the importance, and talk with them about the importance of federal funding for our communities and states. We also met with legislators, and I, as a state board member, met with senators to advocate for continued support for our current technical education programs, as well as talk about Perkins funding, which also helps our CTE programs.
To me, you can see just a few more pictures. We had kind of a legislative meeting before we actually went to the State House to kind of talk about, you know, what kind of questions we get asked, and the advice that would be important to bring up. On the right-hand side, you can kind of see us all like prepping to actually go and give our speeches and our framework stories, as well as the left side.
In this picture, it's Coventry, Canton, and Barerville, all with legislator Lynn Javon.
So one of our main things at WLTI would seem what we can take back to our communities and our chapters to improve our chapters and advocate for Skills USA. A few things that Coventry Chapter will be doing will be facilitating leadership trainings with new chapter officers and members. We'll also strengthen the chapter membership at Coventry High School. We'd want to develop a Coventry Chapter at the middle school, Alantron Feinstein, as well as develop career readiness, awareness activities, and events for our ASFMS and elementary school students, and also organize and implement community service outreach programs.
So what you see here is our statesman award. It's the highest award you can win and be awarded in Skills USA. Kayla Kennedy. Kayla Kennedy, who is not here with us, myself.
Musical accompaniment.
We all received the statesman award. And to be awarded the statesman award, you had to do a written test, kind of like a interview with our school members, and also an interview with, you know, people that don't know you.
So my name is Blake Studley. I am a graphic design student at the Regional Career and Technical Center at Coventry High School. This past year, I competed in Skills USA for the first time and placed third in the state for ad design. I practiced my leadership skills as well as my professionalism skills at WLTI because I wanted to help lead our state board and help be very professional with our senators so we can really get our point across of what we're advocating for. I met with senators Reed and White House while on this trip.
Okay, Kayla Kennedy here, so I'm going to present her slide. She's a criminal justice student. She's been in criminal justice for three years. And what she learned is leadership qualities, teamwork skills, and how to collaborate with others, the impact you can have when you stand up for what you believe in. For fun fact, she's a stateman award winner. She's a silver medalist during the CSI competition last year. She's a representative speaker for the Rhode Island Skills Coventry Chapters are WLTI.
My name is Ashley. Last year, I competed in states for criminal justice, which I play school. And I also, I moved on to compete in nationals. I took silver, and I received an national award for taking silver in nationals. And one, some of the few things I could take away from WLTI was improved leadership skills, communication, and responsibility.
I'm Adriana Pike. I'm a culinary arts student. I competed in a dining room competition for Skills USA last year, and I was a representative. And I've been for Coventry during WLTI this year. I've been in culinary for four years now, and part of Skills for four years. I learned more about the Skills USA framework. I met people from other states, and I still talk to some people, some of the people. And I learned communication and responsibility.
So this is just, you know, a few pictures from the trip that we thought, you know, it's kind of before, and you can see Ms. Ferguson riding her electronic scooter. So yeah, WLTI, you know, it was the first couple of days where it was, you know, a lot of work, but they also implemented, you know, sightseeing, so we were able to see a lot of buildings. So I think it was good and well-rounded, the fact that we, you know, were there for business, but we also got, you know, to adventure out a little bit. So this is our recap video. It kind of gives you an idea. I saw what.
So as you can see, it was really an amazing trip. It was, we came together every day and every night as a total delegation, a national delegation. And the conference was brought by officers, it's from by students, both high school and college. They do a phenomenal job. The kids work their tails off trying to develop their framework. What was their story? What does high school and CTE and education mean to them? So they really took a lot of time working with their peers, unpacking that. What does that look like? And then how did they go to the interstate legislators and explain what it truly means to them? And what their future holds, and how they can support that? So that's a lot of work for a short amount of time. And to be able to go and be articulate and speak to their senators and their congressmen in a way that supports this work. So we had a great time. A lot of work, but we had a lot of fun. And we certainly appreciate the opportunity for us to go.
I just think it's amazing that these kids, two years ago, barely stand up their classroom and speak. Two weeks ago, they were on the steps of the Capitol. I wanted to personally thank you for allowing us to have a school chapter, having state officers and having an advisor to help these kids excel as much as they are.
So we hope we're going to do a lot of work back home here this year. This is really the first time that we've had a really active membership. So we plan on doing a lot of work. They know it. They know there's a lot of work to be done this year, and they're ready to do it.
We're assembling our executive board tomorrow. We have a meeting, our first chapter meeting, and next Friday, we'll have votes. They have to write speeches and present to the, to the school on why they want to take a certain position in the skills board. And October 30th, we have our first fundraiser for $10 a person for a pancake breakfast at the Nadiyoko.
8:30 to 11:30, Saturday morning.
With the city?
October 30th.
Yes, sorry, it's in here, I think.
Always took the money.
And always cool.
Very good.
Also, November 12th, we have our Fall Leadership Conference, and the 1st of December, we will hold our annual project.
Well, thank you.
Before you sit down, I'm going to go down to the school committee and ask everybody to, you know, give comments or ask questions, so we can't go quick yet. Mr. Floria.
I'm so proud of you guys. I mean, that's pretty awesome, isn't it? Going to Washington, meeting, meeting the senators and the representatives, and it's, I'm honored that you did do this work, and I'm honored by Mrs. Ferguson, and I'm honored by Mr. Reed because they do such great work with you guys. Thank you so much, and thank you, thank you so much. Make us proud.
Thank you, Mr. Floria. Mr. Murray.
So I do want to thank you for presenting tonight. Part of the joy of being on school committee sometimes, and sometimes it's hard, is seeing the good things that happen in school, and we don't get enough of that, so it's great to see this. Clearly, you have learned the skill to communicate. You all did an excellent job tonight, and I applaud you for it. That is one of the skills that is needed out in the marketplace, no matter what you do, whether you stay in your given CTE program, late future, or not. The other thing is the importance of advocacy, which you typically never get at this point in your life. Most won't around you, and the importance of that is going to serve you well throughout life. And the fact that you had, you got to go to the Capitol, CDC, have a little fun at the same time, but really learn an entirely different skill outside of your, sort of what you're learning day to day at the high school, I think is going to be immensely helpful to you. And grasp hold of that, because that's only going to make you excel in life. And I do want to thank Mr. Reed, Ms. Ferguson, for your efforts on this. You know, the important thing for us too is showing what these programs are about. I think they are needed. We're in a very difficult time right now, because even though they're needed, they're not supported as they probably should be. And not to get into details about what we're dealing with as a school committee and as a district, but your advocacy helps us as a school committee to get the word out, to ensure these programs are funded, to make them better, and to make Coventry better. So we appreciate it, and it's a group effort, it's a team effort. School committee, the administration, your teachers, everybody, in making Coventry better, and you're helping do that. So we appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian.
That's a hard act to follow. I just want to say, what a tremendous opportunity you all had going to Washington. It's, it's really, you know, not only did you get to visit the Capitol, you got to see DC, as Mr. Murray said, you know, and you you do communicate well. And, you know, I know what it's like to, to sit in front and be afraid to communicate, and then, but you did an awesome job. You did a very, very nice job, and, you know, I just want to commend you. And, you know, you will go places, all of you. Thank you very much, and thank you both for guiding these young women. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian, and Mr. Pearson.
Thank you all for the presentation. Very well done, very well spoken, all of you. It's great, great to see that in young folks. I feel all of a sudden, I'm really encouraged to see, you know, not only did you do this, but what you're planning to use with these, this knowledge, this new knowledge, this training, and these skills, you know, bringing this down to the middle school and the elementary school to give students at that age some awareness of there are other options when you go to the high school, and there are other things you can do, I think is a great thing to do. And I think, once you get more involved with it and working with the younger peers, I think you'll really enjoy that. But, and it's, it's just, again, thank you for doing that. It's really encouraging to see that.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, and I'd like to follow up with that too. I was, when I read this, this presentation, I was like so excited about the middle school and that you're going to be, you know, starting a chapter there and getting those kids excited about leadership and career and technical education. Obviously, I had no idea that this even existed. I knew about Skills USA, but I've been on the committee 19 years, and I didn't know there was a Washington Leadership Training Institute. So that's really exciting. I am curious where you got those jackets. Those are from Skills. So they, so everybody who participates or just the winners, they have to wear those. So they're very sharp, by the way, in the black. You really, you know, looked really, really professional.
It's very, yes, a very professional.
Very professional look. So this advocacy work that you did in Washington will serve you well. And I hope that just excites you about public service, and as you get older, you continue that work, maybe in another field, maybe not in career and technical education, but in governance, local governments, state government. I congratulate our state board member. I am curious, how many people sit on the state board? How many students?
So in past years, we did have many, we didn't have more students, but this year, we do have five students. I'm the representative from Coventry. We have a representative from Warwick, Lincoln Davies Career and Technical Education, Providence Career and Tech, as well as Cranston West.
Cool. And on the national level, there's students also that serve from college and from high school? And how big is that board?
So this year, it was five students, no, six students. We had our post-secondary president, who was secondary in college. Our high school president, as well as high school parliamentarian, treasurer, secretary, and reporter.
And I assume there were adults that mentor the boards in all of these areas? So all levels, you guys, yeah? Yeah, I was wondering, yeah. Okay, very cool. Yeah. Right, I figured. So how many of you have been to Washington previously? Was this your first time? You have? It's a beautiful city. Makes you so proud of our country when you go and see all the monuments, and so I'm so glad you had that experience. And maybe you'll go back another time. Oh. No kidding?
Yep.
Oh. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've only seen that on TV. Yeah. I'm always impressed when I go. I've been, you know, I've been involved with PTA, with state PTA president, so did many, many trips to the Capitol and talked to our legislators, and so I know that experience. And the first time I went, I was so, like, awestruck and afraid, and I was an adult. So it takes, you know, a lot of courage to get up there and advocate for, be an advocate for our career in tech and Perkins and all those good things that you guys are now knowledgeable of. And so I really appreciate this presentation. Thank you to both of your advisors and for, you know, leading these students in a real positive way, and really enjoyed this presentation. So before I let you go, are there any comments from the public? Anybody want to say anything? We're good? Yeah, you can.
Under the leadership of Earl and Lori, the program, the Skills USA program, has gotten bigger. There's more enthusiasm.
Yeah.
And because it's bigger, there's more enthusiasm, there's more participation at the state-level competitions.
Yeah.
Which gives us opportunity to participate at the national level.
Right.
And now we have students, we have one of us now, who medaled at the national level. And I think when we think about ourselves being a top-notch career and technical center, what's going to set us with the cream of the crop in the state and nationally are having programs that are large, where people enthusiastically participate, and then they medal. And they medal consistently, because when kids are moving up from elementary to middle, and I'm glad that you're making that part of your, you know, your platform to get kids engaged, they want to go to places where they can have opportunities like this.
Exactly.
And I think, so you, you guys are setting the groundwork for people who are going to be in this program long after you're gone. And your enthusiasm is really going to carry way past the time that you're here. So we thank you. And then the last part is, were you chaperoning them, or were they chaperoning you? You were chaperoning them.
Well.
That was my one big time fit.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're very pleased that you came tonight and took the time to meet with us. So thank you so much, really. And you guys can leave too, by the way, so you don't have to stay. Because I know you have homework and all kinds of other stuff to do, so. Thank you again for coming, and thank your parents too, because they're a big part of it too.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right. Moving on to agenda item number seven, which is the discussion of adding a Zoom platform to future school committee meetings. This has been raised, and so we're here to discuss whether or not we should include Zoom with our recordings. So, did you want to start, Mr.?
No, I think we had a brief conversation about this before, and I think it's important that the committee's legal counsel, Mr. Anderson, shares, he shared his views with individuals, but I think to have a discussion publicly around this, so I would ask him if he wouldn't mind discussing.
Yes, if you could come forward, Mr. Anderson. Want to go to the mic? Well, because people hear it on the recording, otherwise they won't.
I understand, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
As you know, I represent districts other than Coventry, and I have two districts that use Zoom, and I have another district that I attend the school committee meetings regularly that does not use them. And using Zoom can be very, very difficult. Because what I've observed with Zoom is people sit at home in their parking lounge, and they sit there, and it's like, oh yeah, that's interesting, I'll raise my hand. And as a result of that, the meetings become very long. They don't focus on the agenda. They focus on what people decide to come out of their mouth and talk about. It's extremely difficult for the chair to moderate. If somebody in this room speaks out of order, the chair has a gavel, the chair can, chair usually has a gavel. And the chair can say, you're out of order, and so forth. With Zoom, it's very, very hard for people to talk over each other, and once somebody gets going. The meeting I was at last night started at 7:00 in the evening. It probably should have gone to 8:00, maybe 8:30. It went till 10:30. And the things that were really the important business of the school committee did not get a lot of time. It was more national political issues, you know, is masking good, is, you know, should we balance the fact that, you know, you might die from a COVID vaccine versus the fact that COVID vaccines don't work very well? We had a school nurse who lives in town lecture the school committee about that. It just makes for very long, very tedious and very unfocused meetings. The district I have that does not use Zoom hasn't really talked about doing it. They went back in person. They were one of the first in the state to go back in person. And they've had, you know, for their meetings, a good crowd, particularly when they talked about masking in August. But on the other hand, their meetings seem to be more focused on the agenda. And I think one thing that you have to remember as school committee members is there's business on that agenda. There are things that you have to do. You're going to be voting, for example, on assigning authorization policy. That's really critical, because one of the things that I think is very important, that it's very clear to the administration, to school principals, and so forth, who can and can't sign a contract. And this is going to make it very clear. It's an important piece of business that you're doing. You have other items on your agenda. So my warning with regard to Zoom is approach it carefully. Make sure that you have rules in place. One of my districts decided to end, the people just shut, you know, literally just shouting, almost shouting out, and you only get to speak once. You need to sign up for public participation at the beginning of the meeting. You just can't. Um, you need to sign up for public, uh, participation at the beginning of the meeting. You just can't, you know, ooh, I heard something interesting. I will, you know, walk up and talk about, you know, critical race theory, even though critical race theory is not in the agenda at all. So I, you know, if you wish to pursue it, I can see benefits to it as well. But I think you need to be very careful and you also need to understand the expectations and that it puts on the chair with the chair not having the ability to, you know, literally hit the gavel and say, you're out of order. Anybody have any questions for me based on my experiences in other communities? I'll be honest with you. I'm not a fan.
If, if you could just stay there while we go down the, 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 uh,
Of course.
row here, um, someone might have a question for you. So, Mr. Florio, I know you didn't hear the discussion, but you do know about the option of Zoom. So how, how do you feel about that?
I agree with our attorney. I've discussed the issue with Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
And, uh, whatever our attorney recommends, I go with that. That's why we pay him. That's why we listen to him. That's only my opinion, Madam Chair. Others may have different.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Florio. Um, Mr. Murray.
So I was fairly outspoken at the last meeting on this, on the fact that, you know, I'm always in favor of more transparency, but I think we have quite a bit here of streaming the video. The only thing we're really losing is for somebody to sit in their living room, raise their hand and give public comment instead of coming here. So the legalities is what I'm really also concerned about here is exposure. So anytime you go off an agenda item, let's say a storm happens and Zoom goes down, are we obligated then, because we've used that as a means of public access? Does that expose us if we don't cancel the meeting?
Technically, under the Open Meetings Act, the answer to that, I believe is no. But on the other hand, as a practical matter with the community, you know, the, 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 the power went out in Western Coventry and you kept doing school business and we couldn't participate. Um, you know, I, I think it raises fairness issues. I'm not so sure that it raises legal issues.
Right. And I just know that the current Attorney General's been providing a lot of deference to parties who've been filing all these issues like this, that, you know, you're posting it, you're saying it's, this is a way to access. I expected to have my opportunity to weigh in. I wasn't afforded that opportunity. So that's my, one of my concerns. So, and I express that, that say to the community members who may be listening, is that it's not because I think we're against having transparency. I think there's some real legal issues. The other one I've heard come up is confrontation clause, the ability to actually physically confront people. I don't know if you've heard of that at all as far as legality.
Yeah, uh, the, the confrontation clause is actually, it comes from the constitution and it's actually involves criminal matters. That is, if I'm accused of doing something, I have a right to confront the person before the court, um, who was accusing me of something. The principle behind the confrontation clause though carries over to meetings like this one in that it, again, Zoom does not lend itself to people, uh, rebutting. Basically, once somebody gets the mic in Zoom, they have the mic and it's very, very hard, particularly for the chair to, you know, it's, it's, you, you can't pull, you know, you can't turn the mic off.
It's difficult. So I, I think the committee knows where I sit on this. Again, I say it because I am a big advocate for transparency, but I think in this situation, it's just too much exposure. It's going down a road. It was, it was a good alternative during COVID. I think it was needed. At this point, it's great for my work meetings, but primarily not for a public meeting under the OMA. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mrs. Colonian.
I, um, I agree. I think that, uh, it, you know, I think we're very transparent here. Anybody that wants to come to our meetings can come to our meetings. And, you know, but I, I feel that the Zoom was fine when we couldn't meet publicly, but now we're meeting publicly. So I, you know, I think status quo, the way things are now is fine. I agree with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Mr. Pearson.
I don't think I have any other questions. I think the, uh, thank you for providing your experiences on that and, and legal opinion on this. So it's really, really up to the committee, I guess, to decide how to move forward. Uh, the only reason I asked for this to be on the agenda was because there were members of the pub, public who were asking about it, saying, you know, we're still worried about COVID. We don't want to go to a public meeting. Is there another option for us to participate in meetings? So I thought it was worthy of discussion and, and put everything on the table and see where we go with it. So, uh, thank you everyone for your feedback on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, as far as I'm concerned, um, I'm certainly not afraid as chair that I couldn't, um, handle Zoom guests, but uh, that being said, I think this committee has shown to this community how very transparent we are. When we allow public comment after every agenda item before we even call for the vote. If you watch our meetings, you know that's true. So they can come, um, and, and actually voice something if there's a pertinent issue that it, the agendas are publicized and in the right places. I'm not sure we need to add that extra layer, quite honestly, right now. If, if someone is passionate enough to want to talk about an issue that's on our agenda and they know they're going to have a chance to talk about it and not have to wait till public comment at the end, then I think we have done our due diligence. I really do believe that. And, um, you know, Zooming was convenient in some ways, but we're still recording. So if someone is really, really wants to see what the meeting was, they can watch it on their own time when it's posted. So having the, you know, the, the live stream, I don't think is something that we should be like, you know, criticized for. Um, we're all here in public and I do believe that people who, um, want to come and talk, they'll certainly have a voice here. And last but not least, after you watch the, the meeting, if you want to contact any of us, all our emails are public, our phone numbers are all public. All you have to do is pick up the phone and that happens to us all the time. So whether or not you have the ability on a Zoom, which in some ways there isn't a lot of cross talk back and forth anyway. So I always encourage people, give me a phone call. It's even better than email, you know, because you can get, you can hear what a person's really saying on the phone, or if you do a, a, go out to coffee or whatever. We're all done that, I'm sure with our constituents. So if someone really has a passionate reason to want to talk to us, they can definitely find us. We're not hiding in some cave somewhere. So, um, I thank you for your opinion on this. Um, and I agree that, um, you have your, you know, reasons for thinking it's probably not the best idea, and I'm willing to go along with that. And I think the committee in general, I think, feels that way. Um, we didn't have a vote on this. I don't know if we need to vote. Do, is there a a, a need to vote on this? Or do you want to have it publicly voted on? What's the wish of this committee? I'm sorry? I'm sorry.
What's the motion? That we not indoctrinate the room or?
Yeah, that we just, that we're just going to stay with the present format and not adopt a Zoom platform during our public meetings.
I, I don't think we'd need to vote for that.
Okay. So if we don't need it, I just wanted to, if someone wanted to actually be able to say yea or nay to it. I'm cool. All right. So we're good. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, very much for your comments. Uh, is there any in, buddy in the public that would like to comment on this particular item on whether or not we should offer Zoom? Anyway, thank you so much. Um, I guess we can move on to number eight, which is the second reading of our student dress code policy. We've already, um, had the first, um, so the first, um, motion is to dispense with the second reading. Is there a motion to dispense of the second reading?
Uh, Madam Chair, there is no discussion.
Well, this is just a dispense with the reading. So, and then we'll approve it.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to spend the second reading of the student dress code policy, JICA.
I second the motion.
Any, um, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion, motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to approve this student dress code policy? You have to make a motion.
Oh, okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve. It just says.
I know, I know, but we have to go through it.
To approve the student dress code policy, JICA.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion from the committee?
Can I just bring up, so you had to bring this back. I know we had a lengthy discussion last time. We brought this back to the policy subcommittee.
Yeah.
We had additional feedback from, from, uh, individuals. And so we modified this. Last time, if you, if you noticed, it, it is indicated with all students. And this is, it's highlighted, just it says number four under the policy, under C, high school students may wear hats. So we've kept the policy the same for elementary and middle school students, but it applies just to high schools.
Right. It didn't, it didn't have high school before?
No, I think last time, didn't we, uh?
Before it came.
Yeah, I think.
Because I asked about that.
It was, it's, uh, this is the way it was presented for the first reading.
Yeah. That's why, that's why our principal, Maycom, became, I think, because she was advocating for it. Um, okay. Anything from the public on this policy? Seeing none, um, all in favor? Aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? One, one aye. So motion carries four positives and one negative. Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to item number nine, which is the contract signing. On the contract signing authority policy, DHA, our first reading was our reference number three. Uh, Mr. Levis, did you want to speak to this first? Mr. Pearson?
Um, I believe this, this was brought to our attention, um, not necessarily because of an issue in Coventry, but there have been issues across the state where there, there were some issues with contracts that were signed, maybe not signed. Uh, following process procedure or best practice or, or, or even approval, proper approval process. Um, so we felt it was, it was a, um, as this was brought to us, we reviewed this in the policy subcommittee meeting. Um, putting some process in place for signing third party contracts to, to make sure that, you know, there is accountability and, and things are, we don't have contracts that are signed that no one knows about. And, and I don't know specifically what the issues were in the other districts, but if you can only imagine someone signing a contract without approval, uh, that could be, uh, a big problem for a school district. So it's adding some financial, um, process, uh, policy in place and, and some constraints around the process to make sure that, uh, things are done the proper way.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I have a question for you. The, the, on the references, the DJ dash purchasing policy, is that ours or is that, that is ours? Okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. All right. Thank you. Um, any questions from the committee about this policy? Are we ready just to move on dispensing it? And then we can discuss it more next time or? Yeah. Just wanted to dispense with the, with the reading. Okay. So, um, is there a motion to dispense with the, the, the first reading of the contract signing authority policy, DHA, as presented?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to dispense the first reading of the contract signing authority policy, DHA, as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Okay. No other questions from the committee? All in favor? Aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. I didn't bring that out to the public because you, there's nobody that's going to say anything about dispensing of the first reading. Okay. And item number 10, um, I was told at the beginning of the meeting by the superintendent that we were going to table this. And so because it was a, a, a vote, um, agenda item, is there a motion to, uh, table this particular agenda item?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to table the agreement for facilities and maintenance vehicles, presentation, present, presentation and discussion.
I second the motion.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to number 11, which is the reallocation of funds necessary to fully fund athletics for FY22. Discussion and vote. Mr. Levis, did you want to start this?
So this is being brought to you, uh, before you for a couple of reasons. One is that, um, we had recognized that when we put this year's budget together, we rolled over last year's budget. But if, if you remember, um, what had transpired with athletics, that we had cut athletics out of the budget. And then, um, Ms. Mangielli was, was the director of finance at the time, we're able to find savings through transportation, uh, uh, statewide transportation. So we funded the budget, um, but only for the sports that were running. And so what we found is that for the, for the athletic budget, we were short about $40,000. And so to, to make it whole, we needed to come forward with $40,000. About three weeks ago, Ms. Patno had forwarded an email to me and, and, um, she and I spoke on the phone. There was a, a resident that was concerned about sport, specifically middle school soccer. And the girl was selling fundraising, doing fundraising. And, you know, I know they fundraise and uh, people sell tickets or, um, the point is she had heard that they were self-funded. And so Ms. Patno asked me, and I knew we had self-funded sports. When I first came on, we had met with, uh, Mr. Jones and we had funded, uh, people were, you know, not having money, the booster clubs, they were, you know, we were using some Feinstein money. So we ended up funding all the coaches. And so I called Mr. Jones on this and he said, yeah, the girls soccer and I need to get a history. Well, how did this happen? And I'm, I'm telling you, Superintendent, I'm responsible for any, everything here. So I'm not, I'm not shirking any responsibility. But, um, I needed to know. And I, and then I spoke with Ms. Bowden and she said that it was a co-ed team at the middle school. And then she had approached the school committee to break away with the, uh, the girls team. And, and there was a practice here in the past, uh, we haven't done it in, in, I know since I've been here, but there was a practice to do allow self-funded, right? So when I said, when I, when I found this, I called back Ms. Patno, I said, we need to just correct this now. And then take a look when the FY22 budget, we need to look at all of the sports. Mr. Anderson and I have discussed this. I'll need to work with, you know, Mr. Fognoli, who's assistant athletic director, Mr. Jones, and, uh, Tammy Anderson, who really takes care of all the books at, at the high school. And we're also going to have to contact the boosters because we're going to have to really look and see, you know, are funds being distributed equally and not only by us, but Mr. Anderson, I, we need to look at what the boosters are contributing. But then we also have to make some decisions because, you know, we need to fund these. If I think if, well, I know if we're going to go forward, we need to fund them. So what we're asking for tonight is, um, and I replaced the sheet in, in your packet. I added on a couple of asterisks below. I also included the self-funded sports, which are middle school girls soccer, middle school boys and girls cross country, which is a co-ed team, I believe. Um, the high school boys freshman basketball and the high school boys lacrosse. Those are self-funded. Now we, about four years ago, we started or five years ago, we started paying for all the coach position, but they still fund transportation and referees. And so we need to rectify that, you know? I mean, I think we all want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And then we have unified sports, which are the sports that are a partnership with Special Olympics and the Interscholastic League. And originally they were completely funded by Special Ed, uh, Spe- uh, Special Olympics and somebody, uh, in the scholastic league. Then a little bit of the time, districts had to start taking on some, I think, transportation. And sometimes now they actually help pay for the referees. And so when I talked to Mr. Jones, you know, I was just looking at the self-funded, but he said these sports aren't funded either. So what we're asking for tonight is let us make it whole now. And then in the budget process, so we're going to have to take a look at all these and make some budget decisions, but also making sure that money is distributed. It's, it's easy to look at the funds that we're spending and also look at opportunities. But it's going to be challenging because we're going to have to look at, like, we can't have one booster club giving a hundred thousand dollars to say a boy's sport. And then another booster club's giving 20,000 to save the similar sport for girls. That, that's a, that's a problem in itself. So we're going to have to take a real hard look at this as we do, as we do the budget. And, you know, I'll, I'll pull together individuals to, to do that. I've already spoken to a few individuals, but tonight's about just making it right. Making the budget whole again from the 40,000. And we're going to use funds when we appropriate funds from the ESAR funds. Our plan is for the, uh, Chromebooks, that money is still in the budget. So what we'd like to do is transfer some of those funds, use those funds that were allocated for, for technology and transfer them over to the athletic line in a total amount of $65,000. That's it for me. I'll, I'll entertain any questions. I know there's more information in this, in this document. And I also put the unified sports. But I think, you know, we just need to make it right now financially. But then we really need to take a hard look at, at the number of sports and opportunities, but also most importantly, the funding.
Yeah.
And not just the funding warehouse. And not just the funding warehouse, but also the funding from, from booster clubs because the federal government will look at that. So.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Uh, Mr. Florio, any questions for Mr. Levis?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Right. Mr. Murray?
Of course I have questions, right?
Of course you do.
Um, no, I, I'm interested. Do we know what the, with allocating 65,000 now, or proposing allocate 65,000 now, what is the total number for an entire year if we're to fund just these sports? Do we have that number?
We, we.
I know it's getting ahead.
What are you talking about?
Let's say next year we want to make these whole.
So that's what I, I think.
Is it 65,000 still? Are we talking?
No, no. 40,000 is what we were short in the, in the athletic budget, right? So what we did is we fully funded all the coaches this year, which is about 300 and some odd thousand dollars. But it was a hundred and $60,000 that, that it cost to fully fund, or what the budget was, I should say, for the high school athletics. It was 20,000. That pays for transportation and referees. So this, the 40,000 is filling that hole. And then the 25,000 is, uh, we already paid for the coaches for the self-funded. When we looked at the budget, it's approximately for the transportation and for the, uh, the referees for those other programs, it's approximately 25,000.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of the impact next year. And I'm, I know I'm ahead of myself. I'm just thinking, obviously you know what I'm thinking, right? We've already had to cut sports at one point.
Right.
And I know it's well intended. You know, unfortunately I heard about this by a social media post.
Yeah.
Of somebody doing a rant online. And, and I always tell people, listen, make a phone call to your district representative or to anybody really, so we can explore it and resolve the issue before you, you know, it blows up on social media. And I'll make that plea again for anybody who's potentially watching is, you know, we're very amenable to researching issues and, and trying to address and come up with solutions. So social media isn't always the answer. But, um, that said, I, I believe in making it right. I just, I have, you know, I have the obvious concern that now, you know, equity is great, but it could impact the sports ultimately, you know? And that's, it, it has real effects. Um, it is what it is, you know, for this year. And I, I agree that as far as moving that money over, is that going to affect? Obviously that was some fund balance that was going to happen anyway. Does that impact anything else that we were scheduling to do? Is that the other? What's the net effect of this by extracting that money out? And I'll look to Harold Sands on, on that, I guess.
Yeah. Uh, I talked to, to Mr. Murphy on that and we had a lot of discussion. This has already been used by Esser funds.
Yeah.
We, we replaced that. It wasn't taken out of the budget and we distributed. So therefore,
So it was never part of any approvals we've already done or?
It's, this is part of what we talked about by using funds to free up operations.
No, I get that. I just.
No, we had not targeted this at all for anything. This isn't.
We have plenty of needs.
Right.
What does it take from, you know? And I understand it has to get funded, but does, you know, I, I'm trying to point out that, and I have the discussion more, I, I, sometimes I know the answer to the question. I have it more to make people understand, like, every time we fund something, it comes from something else. So that's, you know, and that's, that's something.
But if we didn't have the Esser funds and if we didn't use them strategically.
Correct.
We'd be having a different conversation right now. But I think.
That's more my point.
I just want to be clear though, this is about just now, like making it right now. And then we have real tough decisions to make in looking because, because, uh, we have to look at next year, equity is going to be a big part of that, right? And, and, and also we, you know, and I've, you know, it's not my decision, but I, I spoke to Ms. Patno about this, is that we, we can't do this self-funded piece, right? We have to have more strategic because I, I think it's nice. Yeah. People want to have a sport and the parents are going to say, we're going to raise the money and it's great, but it, it creates issues, right? So moving forward, we have to rectify this. So that's why right now we're trying to rectify it by saying, you're right, we shouldn't, this is how we're going to make everybody whole. But then we're going to have tough decisions to make through the budget process.
Yeah. And so along those lines, just, you know, to be helpful, um, I think that's a dialogue personally, I think should be starting to happen now with the booster clubs. Um, because I know this came up when sports did get caught. And in hindsight, everything's in retrospect, right? Somebody had called me and said, well, we have raised all these funds ourselves. We could go out and actually do cross-country. Um, what happens to that money? And, and so they could have gone and run their program. Everyone else would have been in a standstill. So, and as I look at it in retrospect, that was a really good question. And, and it sort of brought up this, it kind of highlighted this at the time, not really tying in in Title IX and all the inequities in it. So one of the things that I had talked to this individual about is, you know, pooling the booster clubs, which presents its own issues because some raise more than others, and how do you distribute the money? But it's a dialogue, I think, that needs to happen now because by the time we get budget season.
Right.
And we start thinking about this, how does this actually work?
Yeah.
Um, I would encourage that to happen like now. Um, so we're not caught short-ended on the other side of the budget rainbow. We're fast approaching. So that's all. And I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mrs. Kalunian? I don't have any questions. Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
You, you don't have to, you can't control the booster clubs because they're not part of our school district. However, you can control the money that they are donating to the schools. Um, and we don't have a policy on that. I know it's coming up in years past. So I expect this to be an agenda item soon in our policy subcommittee.
Yeah.
Um, questions? And then I have a really snarky comment, so be, be prepared. Uh, why, why the decision, decision all of a sudden that we have to spend money this year when we didn't budget for it to give money to the unfunded sports, which we've always accepted as unfunded sports? Like, why? What's, what's the rush?
To make them whole. Because I, I, I mean, you can say no, um, but my belief is that it shouldn't be this way. Like, um, I think there's some valid points that, you know, like, we probably shouldn't have these unfunded sports, uh, self-funded. And so I think it's a problem that we need to fix. And so I feel that once, one way of rectifying, at least now in the short term, is to fund them. And then we really have to go back and take a hard look at in terms of equity, funding. Um, and it may be that we don't have some of these sports.
So the, so the boosters, it doesn't matter whether or not the boosters have the money to continue self-funding. The, the feeling is now, you know, we bring them under our umbrella entirely and fund them fully.
I, I, I'm saying right now, I think it's, I, I believe it's the right action to do. And then we can make decisions. You know, again, I'm not going to point the finger on how this was done in the past, but I think that's part of what we do. We've done that in other areas, trying to rectify it moving forward and really take a hard look in the budget process. I'm not saying these will all be included in the budget next year. Um, but, but some should, like the unified sports that we do that are, they should be funded. And, and for whatever reason, they weren't in the budget. I, you know, I'm not pointing the finger, but I think it's important that we do fund them. And we, we just happen to have the ability to do it right now. But again, it's not, I'm bringing it forward to the committee. I think it's the right thing to do, but it's not my decision, but it's my recommendation.
Yeah. So it's a budgetary discussion we should have had last year before we voted on a budget, in my opinion. Um, my, my big concern and my snarky comment is, and apologize in advance, um, big concern about the path forward, and it's something I think we just have to be conscious of and, and aware of as we move forward, is we're, we're basically prohibiting self-funded sports by bringing them all under our umbrella and then telling students and families that, and by the way, you may not have this sport next year as we do our budgeting and decide to cut certain things. Um, I, I, that leaves a very bitter taste in my palate. Um, uh, and I don't think it's in, it's really fully in the spirit of why we allowed self-funded sports in the first place. So I understand both sides of the coin, uh, but there are pros and cons with, which each approach. Uh, I am on the record saying I'm not in favor of scooping the money out for, for the, the 25,000 at this time. Um, the 40, if we didn't budget for it, that, you know, it's a mistake, I guess we need to rectify. But the 20, the 25,000 to start funding self-funded sports is a complete change in our, you know, our, what we're feeling and thinking about, about what we're doing. And we're doing it midway through a, a fiscal year that, that to me does not, did not make sense. Um, as Mr. Murray pointed out, there are needs everywhere. Um, so what, if we take that 25, you say we have it, sure, but could it be better spent somewhere else is, is a question. And that's not putting down those self-funded sports or the unified teams. It's just that we're changing the status quo halfway through the game, um, changing the rules. That's my thoughts and my feelings on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, I, I agree. I will support this, um, reallocation. Um, I think there are some truth to what has been said in what are we going to do next year? I think it will call the question. I agree with Mr. Murray that this needs to be earlier rather than later. Um, we have to, if, if we're going to go ahead and self-fund, you know, actually fund the self-funded ones that are self-funded right now, they're going to look for the same support next time. And so we have to make, you know, this has to come back to us next year when we do the FY23 budget. And some hard decisions may have to be made. And so we may still, still be riding the COVID bubble for, you know, FY23, but sooner or later, it's going to hit us, whether that's FY24, 25, whatever. And so before that happens, I think we definitely need to have, this has been talked about since I've been on the committee multiple times with multiple superintendents. So, um, the, the Title IX piece and kind of squeezing by and, and sort of, you know, no one's going to call the question, but when someone from the community calls the question about Title IX and are we doing things legally? We might, we might, you know, squeeze through a loophole of some sort, but is it really fair to both genders? Um, and do we, in fact, offer the same opportunities to all of our athletic students? And, and so that's a really huge, big question. And you're right, there may be some sports that will get canceled because the participation is such or whatever. Um, maybe the cost is prohibitive because of the sport. I, I'm not sure because I don't know enough about it. But one thing's for sure, there should be some kind of steering committee that's put together that actually studies this because, um, it is going to hit us again.
And I think we need to look too. Is that one thing that I haven't, but how many districts in the state have like the, the practice of self-funded sports? I understand where I've been, there's been a practice, somebody wants to start a sport to see if there's interest, they do it for a year.
And then you fund.
And if it can sustain, then the school department funds it. But I've never, and again, I'm, I'm not saying that I'm an expert in this, but that's one of the questions I'll ask with the superintendent's association to see how many districts have this practice because I, I, you know, I would question at least using that for, going with that practice moving forward. Cause I think it sets us up in, in situations and, uh, I, I agree that, you know, we need to move on this quickly. And, uh, like I said, if the committee decides not to fund it, that, that's your choice. I, um, you know, I think we, we, either way, we need to take a hard look at all this in the budget process, you know, uh, next year.
And I, I don't think we're alone, quite honestly. I mean, where I work at Brown, that they just had a huge case that they had to settle with Brown Athletics because they weren't, someone called the question on whether or not Title IX was being followed. And so there was a huge backlash and, you know, they tried to cancel certain things and that didn't go over. And so it is a, it's going to be a, a brewing problem that will need to be decided upon. And you're going to have to have parent input as well, not just, um, you know, so whatever committee comes together, they need to, and I think there are some, um, communities that do it better. They, you know, all the booster club money that is raised gets into one pot basically, and then is somehow, you know, there's like a sports foundation for the town.
We had talked about it.
Yeah.
I remember I was there, but it was.
Yeah.
Right. But getting people together, you know, was, uh, is, is challenging. Now there's different leadership and, and.
And maybe that'll.
So we can try again, but.
Yeah.
And I know some of the, like the golf program that comes to me and said, you know, they're going around asking for funds and the hockey team and the football team have already received funds from these businesses. So it is a challenge.
It is.
So I, I agree. I know we've talked about too, a policy around, you know, we can't control what people raise, but we can control how it gets distributed in terms of, you know, how, how we accept it. So maybe that'll be something that, that'll assist us in the process. So.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
I just, uh, I do have a question because Mr. Pearson brought up a, a reasonable point here about starting in the middle of the budget cycle, which is, um, do we have, do we know how much has been actually raised already? Because now we're supplementing their funding, which is going to raise the total funding up prospectively because they were already funded, self-funded. So we're essentially adding on another layer. So I, you know, I, and, and that doesn't mean I'm not in favor because I, I do believe that we should be funding. It just opens up, it does open up a can of worms, especially I just, you know, I sometimes feel like the knee-jerk reaction is like we're trying to solve the issue. I just, I guess what's internally going through me right now is, are we, are we potentially going to make it a little bit worse by being in mid-cycle? And I don't know the answer to that question. I, I understand the superintendent's concern. And I, I agree in many ways, but Mr. Pearson also makes a, a reasonable point about mid-cycle. The other thing is, is, you know, if we do get, I, I agree with Ms. Patno about steering committee because it's going to come up. If we end up having to cut a sport because we don't have the budget funding, the next question is going to be, can we self-fund it? And we're going to say, no.
We have to have the policy to back it up.
They say no. Uh, you know, so, and then that's going to cause, so we got to be very, you know, and that's, I think we have to be extremely clear going into next year on how we're going to approach each one of these questions.
I think policy is crucial, right? I think, I definitely.
And I think that was a great suggestion.
Getting legal advice around that. Um, but the other piece is that, you know, and that'll help us because right now I don't know, I have no idea how much is spent on booster clubs. I know they raise a lot of money and I see different things, but I honestly don't know, you know, uh, what, what they're spending, what they're raising. And that's something that, you know, you know, when I talk to Mr. Anderson, we, we need to figure that out. And like, it's easier said than done. So I think again, going back to policy, I think that's crucial. I'll put it on our next policy subcommittee agenda. So.
It really is an equity issue for me, you know? So I think it needs to be looked at. Are we ready to move on this?
Yes. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the real, reallocation of funds necessary to fully fund sports for the fiscal year 2022 in the amount of 65,000.
I second the motion.
Any more questions from the committee? Anything from the public? Good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So motion carries four, affirmative, one, no. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to, um, agenda item number 12, purchase of vans for transporting students using the American Recovery Plan funds. Discussion and vote.
So you have a pack, you have a, a PowerPoint. Uh, Mr. Sands and I went over, we made a couple of changes and I apologize. I will get, I will send that to you as soon as we're done. Um, so what we're going to put on the screen, in, in the bottom line is when you see the numbers, we, we increased the cost of, uh, we wanted to be ultra-conservative in presenting this to you. Um, so we increased the cost of what it's going to cost for, uh, the salary for our drivers. And, uh, we also changed the amount of students that we based this on. So, um, we talked about this before. You, the committee brought up good points. We need to make sure that first of all, the vans were, uh, appropriate use of Esser funds. Um, there's an email and it's, it's actually a number seven, but it should be tied to this. An email from Mark Dunham, who is, uh, director of finance for the Department of Ed. And he said the use of Esser funds is appropriate, um, or American Recovery Plan funds is appropriate for this use. So that was, I know that was a question mark and, and it's kind of like, you know, you can't go till we had that answer. Um, the other part is that, two parts to this is in, in, in Mr. Dunham's email, he talks about justifying how this impacts our operational budget, right? And so, um, we've revised some of the numbers here, but I think it's important to know that, um, if we can put these in play, we've built this off of just seven students that we're transporting. We have a student that's costing us 6,000 a month. So that's not all we'll be transporting, but we want to demonstrate that we can actually pay for the vehicles, save approximately a hundred and $50,000 a year by implementing this. Now that's just on seven students. We know that, A, we can provide transportation to other, other students. Um, and another piece that I think is important, I didn't throw it into the presentation here, but it's important is every day there are students, students that are foster children, students with disabilities who are not being transported. We get emails, myself, Mr. Sands, Mr. Martin, we get email, Mr. Martin gets all of them, saying that, oh, we can't transport Johnny today. We've notified the family in the program. Um, we had one that couldn't transport him to and from school. Then he said, oh, we can get him back home, right? So we have a responsibility. It's our responsibility and we can't do that, you know? We tabled a conversation tonight where we're desperate. We have an employee using their own vehicle because Mr. Martin doesn't have vehicles, but there was a legal issue at the last minute. We had to table it. Um, but we're desperate for vehicles. But in this case, it's, it's, to me, it's. But we're desperate for vehicles. But in this case, it's, to me, it's, you know, especially being a former special ed director, just knowing that certain kids, like, we have to fight just to level the playing field. And now we can't even get them to programs and schools. We can't get foster kids that may live in Portsmouth, that may have, that have a right that go to school, maybe at Blackrock, and then we find out they can't, we can't get them there, right? And so putting the money aside, you know, we need more, this isn't going to go away. You know, the state's saying about transportation that this is going to be an issue for a while. And so I just wanted to look at the ethical reason, I think, behind this is that we have kids every single day that are not getting to programs because we can't provide them transportation. Mr. Martin's done an incredible job if we can use any of our vehicles, but we're strapped for vehicles and most of our vehicles are, are, you know.
Unsafe.
Well, I don't say they're unsafe because they're on the road, but they're life expectancy. No. So I just want to stress that, it's not in the presentation. But I think we have an opportunity here to use Esser funds. It'll reduce our budget moving forward. And we did a conservative $150,000 savings, right? We think that's conservative. And we're just using seven students in this, these new projections here. So let me go through it and then, you know, questions that you have. We're looking for approval tonight. We know it's not going to be easy to get the vehicles. We took these off of the master price agreement. We took a higher price because the reality is that to get vehicles today, you're not going to get basic vehicles. We're going to get vehicles that have like bells and whistles. So, but I just want you, I will share the hard copy of this as we go forward. But I think it's imperative, and again, if you have questions, obviously, we'll answer those questions. So these are just, you know, these are just some points we're highlighting. Like I said, we have one student, we're paying $6,000 a month to transport, just one student. We also have students that, you know, there was a law that you couldn't transport a student, couldn't spend any more time on a bus than an hour, right? And that was throughout the state. Well, now they've thrown that law out the window because we have students who are getting to school an hour late. They're on a bus an hour and a half, two hours. We have students that are being picked up an hour early because it's the only time they can get a bus, right? So again, this isn't part of our, because I know people care about the bottom line, the numbers, but I think it's important to know that. We have an opportunity to rectify that here. And here we talked about the vans saving us $150,000 annual costs. And that's based on, so this says 10 students, but I think it's, we recalculate based on seven?
Yeah.
Okay. We just didn't change it here. If you want to go to the next slide, so this is where we do the math. So the upfront cost, that's per vehicle. We're looking for five vans, so it's $205,000. Salary, this is where we made a major increase because we want to include benefits and, so it's $54,966. And again, I'll send this to the committee. So we have to, we have to put other things on the vehicles for Department of Transportation. So we put in about $2,500. We've already talked to the trust, we have the proper insurance coverage, liability coverage. You know, gas we put, and again, these are estimates. But I think you're going to see the maintenance, and don't forget, they're also, these vehicles will be under warranty for at least three years, maybe longer. So we show about the daily cost, about $386. So we, again, we pay, the way statewide works is we pay for the bus. But if we have a student that's going one place and no one else is on the bus, we pay for the entire bus. And that's the problem we have with Esser because we have students moving in and out of Coventry. They have a right to continue school in their home school, wherever they move from. And we partner with other districts on that. So you can see some of the assumptions we've made. Can go to the next slide? So this is our May 2021 bill. So this is where we look at taking seven students. And these are our actual bills. You can look at what we felt we projected, just on these seven students, saving currently $751 daily. Because again, we're paying for entire buses for students, depending on where they go. Now, obviously, that can change, that could change next year. But again, we're basing this on seven students. And how many students do we transport? Would you say statewide on a given day?
Oh, well, we include a bit of protection stuff. There's quite a few, but if it's something, that's okay, it's probably a total.
20, 25?
I would say 30.
30, right. So, but this allows us the opportunity as a new student comes on board, just to pick them up and incorporate them.
So you're saying that you're going to use these vans for more than just statewide transportation using right now?
Correct. Well, no, we could use them for more. We just wanted to make a case that the seven would pay for, they would pay for itself, and this is the savings we have just on these seven. Because, because somebody could say, well, these are certain seven kids, but we have 30 kids. But the fact of the matter is, it changes, placements may change, but it gives us the flexibility. And this isn't going to be something we can put in place right away. It could take us several months to get vans, you know, we're going to have to get drivers. We'll have drivers, we have in a contract that, you know, we have in our SFP contract, we have the driver position.
Okay. So they would work for us?
They would work for us, yes. They'd be employees. And that's why we readjusted the salary piece. But even with that, the assumptions we make, we believe that we can definitely save money and pay for ourselves. To the point that Mr. Murray brought up, there's a good point, is that we will put together and we'll, we can set aside or make, you know, create a restrictive fund where we could take funds and put it in there. So at the end of five years, because we know where this is money we're using that's, you know, federal money, we're not going to have this money five years from now. And again, I think the other important piece of this is we're talking about, you know, operations. We're talking about the bond and how the bond will offset our maintenance requirement that has to be part of our operations. We're doing the same thing here. We're showing like we do with the Chromebooks. And I understand the points that were made before about, just because we have it, doesn't mean we have to spend it. But the fact is, we're using these funds strategically to not only meet the needs of our students, but also to address operational concerns. And we know statewide has been, like last year, if you remember, they had projected it was going to go about $400,000, $500,000 more than we had budgeted. I think it was $800,000 and went to, they told us 1.3 million. And then Ms. Manzarelli was able to, to just basically say, we're going to pull out then, we're going to go on our own. And they reduced it by 400,000. So. So another slide, okay. So this is just.
That's on the basis, and basically that's what you save in 180 days.
But we know we transport more than 180 days. We're transporting kids all year round. We transport kids in the summer. So again, we wanted to be conservative, but and the other opportunity, and we can, we can offer this because we're going to be able to write his real, they've changed the regulations and partnering with Department of Transportation. So we'll be able to transport. Before, we couldn't transport to or from school, home. We could transport during the day. And in an occasion, we could. Now they've changed that because of such the need. And so we can transport not only our students, we could transport students potentially from Exeter, West Greenwich, from Situate, from West Warwick, from Foster-Gloucester. I mean, we could transport kids in our surrounding communities because we're going to placements. And if definitely if we're going to their community. And that's nothing, something we haven't figured out, we haven't included in here.
So you could undercut their statewide?
Well, we could definitely, yeah. I mean, we could definitely do that.
How many districts use statewide? Everybody? They don't have an option?
No, because even if they have their own, like Cranston, there, people aren't bidding on these contracts. Some of the districts, like Providence went out to Massachusetts, and I forgot they got a contract, but they're paying, you know, much higher than they pay statewide. So, but it was just because of need.
So questions? Mr. Florio? I assume you're done.
I'm done, yes.
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
I'd actually like Mr. Martin to just comment on this because you're the boots-on-the-ground who runs the transportation. So if you just come up, I'm just interested in your take. I asked last time, in the interest of fairness that I hear from you. So I'm just, you're the person day-to-day who has to deal with this. So do you feel confident in this proposal? Do you feel like you can manage it? What do you think about hiring additional drivers, all of that?
Most of the committee knows me very well and knows how difficult it is for me to see emails about students not having the ability, not a fault of their own, to get to school. To be responsible for getting kids to and from school and not being able to do it is, I can't deal. Like, I really struggle. So this is, I think, a very good first step at trying to establish more flexibility in being able to do this. I don't know how this is all going to play out, but I know that I've seen what we can do when we need to, and all this is, is a tool. It's easily going to pay for itself, and we may learn that we want more and we can do more. So I think this is very like a bare minimum star that will give us more tools to help here. I mean, we're seeing things that, like Mr. Levis said, to get an email that says, oh, FYI, you know, Jason's not getting to school today. What does that mean? What, you know what I mean? Like, so this is an option where if we had this, we could say, you know what? Yes, he is. We're going to send this person in the bus and they're going to go get him. So I think that this is, financially, it seems like it's a no-brainer. How it's going to play out is, remains to be seen, but we're going to figure it out and we'll get it done.
I know that because of the way the funds are structured, really can do a lease on this one because I'm assuming we have to, it's a direct expenditure out of the Esser fund. So fleet management, you feel like, you know, you can manage an additional five vehicles?
So we have many of those mini buses already throughout the district of the Rego, Career and Tech. And we use some at the middle school for ULSS. Like, we have these buses and my mechanic is already knowledgeable and has good partnerships with the companies that we come from. And the state inspection, because they have to go through state inspection just like a regular bus. So we have our hands already on that because we're doing, you know, going forward, more vehicles that we add, they are under warranty. My mechanic's a 30-hour person, might we need to bump him up to 40, maybe? But if they're new vehicles, it shouldn't be adding too much to his daily life, oil change here and there. So I think with the limited amount of vehicles that we're talking about adding right now, that it's very doable. And then we could have a conversation with the Career and Tech Center to see if automotive can help with oil changes and stuff like that too. So there is other opportunities that could arise from this.
Okay. I mean, the obvious thing is, from what I'm hearing, we're going to save a substantial amount of money. You know, one of the things I've recommended and I recommended previously is not taking all of those savings, just shoving it to plug holes, taking some of those savings to fund, maybe that 30-hour goes to a 40-hour position. We've set aside some money for parts, we set aside some money for future replacement.
Because one thing that has, you know, buses have proven that after, you know, five years or so, they do require, you know, some maintenance. So to think that we're just going to buy them, they're going to go beautiful forever, it's not realistic.
And maybe by that point, we can roll it into a leasing program. And that may be an option, but I would encourage, and, you know, if we vote on this, one of my suggested amendments is that, you know, that we make a motion that we set up a restricted account to be determined. We don't have to determine amounts, but come back to us with what that looks like. Because I really am committed to making sure that you get the resources you need without adding more to your table, because this is always missed. We're adding more to your plate, which is, I think it's a great add. I don't want to just add it, not give you the resources to be able to maintain these long-term, because that's just short-sighted, so.
And I appreciate that.
So, and then I think that's it, unless the other members have questions of Mr. Martin for me. And then I just have a couple of financial, so this is Esser one and two funds? Because I don't think they've provided any guidance on Esser three yet, right?
No, this is Esser two and ARP. So it's Esser two and three.
Okay. So, because I know Esser three, they haven't given that guidance on yet, right?
We could email Mark Dunham so we could use Esser two.
Right. Esser two is good. Okay. And I did, I appreciate the email confirming that because that was one question we had last time that is now buttoned up. The last thing I'll say is, listen, I'm tough, I know that. But there's a reason, there's always a reason. And so I appreciate you going back, getting the email, defining the funds, looking at the numbers, offering to do the restricted account. Those are all things that we requested, your responsiveness, Mr. Sands, and I appreciate that. So thank you for doing the legwork. Thank you, Mr. Levis, for doing the legwork. I think it will be a win. I think anytime you can save money and get a better service is a win. So, and it's never been about whether this was a win, we just need to verify that it is truly a win for the district, so. And clearly have laid that out, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Caloni, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Murray, for asking the questions about fleet management. I think that's important. I'm sure these don't have the same kind of maintenance schedule as the town's jet truck that they're getting. I've seen that maintenance schedule. Oh, boy. By a house with that. No, I think this is, this is good. I think this is, the numbers look very solid. There's a demonstrated financial savings in doing it this way. I do like Mr. Murray's idea also of, you know, we're saving money and if there's, there's a need to replace these at some point, you know, do we take a portion of that savings and put it in a restricted, whatever we have to do to keep this ongoing? So we don't find ourselves in five, seven years going, all the vans are broken or something happening. So, so no, good, no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Murray, since you did mention you wanted to amend this motion, would you like to take a stab at that?
Yeah, so I guess I'll. I'll take a stab. So I make a motion that we amend the current language to include that the finance director established a restricted account for future vehicle maintenance and replacement. Does that sound reasonable?
That sounds reasonable. So you're making that motion, Mr. Murray?
Making my motion.
And is there a second on that?
Second.
Florio, Murray, all right. Any other further questions from the committee? How about the citizens gathered? Anything? We're good? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries five to zero. Again, thank you for the extra explanations and going through this so that we're comfortable with it. Sounds like a great idea to me. Moving on to.
Do we have to take a separate vote on the whole? I know we voted on the amendment.
Oh, no, I think you just amended that.
Just making sure.
Yeah, no, we're good. That's not in stone, that's just for us to kind of keep us on track. Moving on to agenda item number 13, the American Recovery Plan Funds, discussion and vote, which was our reference number seven. So did you want to start this?
Start then, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Coward. So what I'm going to talk about is, you have a couple of sheets there, one is, but I'm going to look at the one that just says American Recovery Plan Funds. And what I'm going to highlight, so we've already talked about the vans, so that's included up here. Mr. Coward's going to talk about the curriculum and then also purchase service to Stride Program. What I'm going to just talk about briefly is that you all are aware about the Homecoming, the Homecoming Dance, it was canceled, and I received, you know, feedback from not only constituents, your constituents, but also from some committee members, council members. Ms. Maycumber, you know, did talk to students and then, you know, she, I hope she doesn't mind me saying this, but, you know, she said, you know what, her son Connor had just graduated last year and she stepped back and said, you know, if it was his senior year, he says, she says, I would want to do everything I can do. And she said, you know what, I'm going to do anything I can do to make this happen. Because there was a conversation, I think, Mr. Fagnola, you might have been in her office with me and just talking about having this dance outdoors and what type of effort it was going to take. And people are tired and, you know, it just was going to be, you know, just to know how she could pull it off. And then a week later, she calls me and says, you know, I really want to try it, I want to do it, but I'm going to need some funds. And I said, you know, I don't, I said, we'll have to go before the committee. And that's what we're looking at tonight. You know, the $6,772.10 is for tent, large, large tent and tables and chairs to have that, the Homecoming Dance outdoors. I think it's appropriate use of the funds because the funds are about, you know, how do we address COVID? I think we're taking a situation that people perceived as negative. We couldn't have 1,000 people in the gym indoors, we just weren't, she made this happen. I think what's really important to highlight too is that the only way she could do this is to have volunteers. So she sent out emails and I think there's over 50, 60 high school staff. I know 65 high school staff, some town council members had offered to assist. I know I saw the sheet today, has different people that, you know, different, all over the.
Has different people that, you know, different, all over the place. So. Um, I'm, one of the things we're gonna ask you to prove tonight is, uh, the six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. So that we can, well, so we can, so we can have the homecoming dance, uh, this weekend. And so I know we have to, uh, cut a check tomorrow. So we're hoping, so that's the part of this that I, I want to, uh. Just to discuss, I don't know if anybody, if you can break it up, if anybody has any questions about that. I'm. Like I said, I think there was a lot of, you know, a lot of people wanted this. They didn't understand, um. You know, there's no way I could force the high school and miss me come and say, do, you know, there's, you know, take this on if you don't think you can do it safely. But the fact that she had the desire to do it, um, for the students and, uh, the staff pulled together and made this happen. So. I think it's a, a small price to pay for this huge. Uh, success. So I don't know if there's any questions just on the, the homecoming rentals, but it is tent, is a large tent, is a couple of smaller tents. And then it's the tables and chairs. That'll be spread and it's gonna be on the football field. So.
Are there gonna be lights in the tent?
I believe there are lights. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yep.
Yeah, yeah, because it's gonna be dark and I know that football lights, but you know, might not be.
They'll be on though.
Not, might not be as bright in the tent. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, they have it all diagrammed and, and, and people are stationed and we've identified, I said, we.
Yep. Uh, Donna?
I wanted to, to know, are they gonna have heaters in?
No, no, we couldn't have heaters in the tent. I mean, it would be a whole nother fire. It's.
It's this.
Saturday night.
Saturday night. It's supposed to be.
Rain.
Yeah, am I supposed to get rainy?
Well, a lot of body heat. You know what? You can't.
You know, hey, they're gonna have to wear, you know, something. I, I think they'll be. At least they'll, they'll, it's, you know, that many bodies under a tent. It'll be warm. We hope.
Yeah, Brooke, Brooke sent an email to people, to everybody preparing them and reminding them to wear. You know, rain jackets and things. Um, but there's been a lot of undertaking for it. But anyways.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're good. Uh, anything for Mr. Levis before Mr. Coward starts? You're good? Okay. All right, Mr. Coward.
So there's a few different pieces to this. Um. So you, so you know, and, and I know we've presented this earlier that, um, there was legislation that required. All school districts in Rhode Island to purchase high quality curriculum materials. Um, the first two subject areas, content areas were math and E L A. And we're required to have programs, material programs, uh, chosen and then, um. Then implemented and then it would be science and social studies after that. You may also recall that we wrote a grant and we received a half a million dollars just about. To cover the secondary level E L A curriculum materials and training. Uh, we were very fortunate to get that and it was, it was a large grant. So the middle school. English language arts curriculum has been purchased. The professional development's been done. The high school, uh, went through, uh, an implementation process last year. And then, um, we decided to extend that into this year. So their materials have not, they haven't picked the final product and they haven't. Uh, made a decision and it hasn't been implemented or, or training hasn't begun, but that's been allocated. One of the things that we knew was gonna be hanging over us this whole time is how we pay for the other curriculum areas where we don't have grant money to fund it. And, um. So for the elementary level, we picked a program called E L. Uh, it's a high quality curriculum program. It's approved by RIDE. It fits all the requirements under the general legislation that, uh, went forward. But it does require some purchasing. I will say there are some resources free online. And maybe in the future, as our teachers get more comfortable with the program and the platform, we could access. Those free materials, but when you start something new and you want to do it with fidelity. Um, I don't think it's fair to say to teachers to go online and try to hunt and pack and figure out. You know, what sheet of paper they're gonna do on a particular day. So we partnered with a company called Open Up. So we split the, um, the rollout at elementary into two sections. We did three to five firsts and then we're doing K to two. And we did that strategically because. The E L program, which Open Up is the, the print partner for, is also the, 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 the partner that we chose for the middle school. And so we figured if we implemented three to five firsts, that would feed into the middle school program. And get the kids going into sixth grade ramped up into the protocols, the procedures, the vocabulary, the structure of the program. So, uh, we had, um, an opportunity to, to get some materials, uh, last year's budget. Uh, using, uh, a few different sources that, uh, we were able to kind of piece together. But we knew that when, when this year came, uh, we were gonna need to have to make some purchases. So. Um, I talked to Mr. Sands, I talked to Mr. Levis and, um, purchasing curriculum materials falls well within the scope. Of the state, uh, the federal money. And so we look at this as also an opportunity for us to. Kind of fund an unfunded mandate and have a little bit of, um. You know, a, a diversion of, of cost, right? So instead of us hitting the budget. And having us try to find a way to pay for it, we can use the COVID money to pay for it. So what you see in front of you, and I shared this last weekend with Mr. Levis is, um. And I'm gonna start in the middle because that's the first thing I spoke about. So we have open up resources, grades three to five materials. And that's for fifty-seven thousand, five ninety-two. Those are all, uh, for the most part consumable materials and then some. Some handbooks, some, um, texts, uh, textbooks are trade books, books that kids read. The program is a trade book. Program, meaning it's not a textbook program per se. Most of the learning comes from trade books. The kids read actual novels beginning to end and they teach through those. Luckily, last year, we also used some Title One money to purchase. Uh, those trade books for the three Title One schools out of a different pot. So you, I, I, I only bring that kind of those things up because I want you to know. We really try to find creative ways to solve our problems. And this is just another one of those things that we're doing. Um, when Mrs. Anzaloni came on, especially coming up from the elementary ranks. Um, and being very involved in the three to five work that happened, uh, going into this year, one of the things that we, um. Were able to do is we got a number of teachers, we call them early adopters, teachers in K to two that said. I, I don't want to wait till next year. I know it's coming. I'm excited. I'm interested. I want to get started. We don't want to squash that, right? That kind of enthusiasm you embrace because those are gonna become our leaders. Next year because they're gonna have a year under their belt and they're going to, uh, help train their, their, their colleagues and they're gonna be the leaders of this curriculum movement. So you'll see the top line is open up K to two skills course manual. So embedded in the K to two program. Is, um, what they call the skills block, which is, and we've mentioned this before, it's, it's, it's very similar to what we used to. Use, which is called foundations and foundations is how you teach phonics essentially. So what, what E L has done is they've taken all the same principles that live in foundations. They altered the things, uh, things a little bit in terms of, you know, the sequence or the order they teach some of the sounds in. But for the most part, it's a very similar program, but it's called the skills block. And we needed to get some materials for those early adopters so they can implement the skills block. And then the third thing you'll see on the list is called ZERN. ZERN is a math program. Uh, Mrs. Anzaloni got a grant. Uh, we were very lucky. It was a pretty large grant. What was the amount, Mrs. Anzaloni? Sixty-two thousand and we were able to use some of those funds, uh, for summer work, uh, for PD. And, uh, gaining access to, uh, some curriculum. Now, we haven't made a decision about elementary math yet, but this, this falls under the umbrella of piloting new materials, right? We're trying something new. But we did have to have, um, an investment into some of the, um. The, the, the books and materials that teachers need to do this pilot. So, um, the ZERN is the twenty-six thousand, three oh nine. Uh, there's a, there's a technological component of it that we, um, were able to get free. And free access to, which is really win, a big win for us. So when you take those three things together, it's the ninety-six thousand. Four thirty-five and that addresses the curriculum needs for the elementary school for the current year we're in now. Any questions about that before I move on?
I actually do have one question. So these are purchased materials, one time cost, not subscription.
Not subscriptions, but not necessarily one time, one, one time costs because some of them are consumables. We, what we used to call workbooks. So they are purchases that happen year over year if you decide that you want to continue using that product.
Understood, but we're not locked into subscription. I just, you know, so the future. Okay.
So that's, that's that piece. The second, the, the middle of the page talks about stride. So, um, when, when, uh, last year we had a distance learning model, we were required from the state to have a distance learning model. And what we did is we used some of our funding to create distance learning teachers. We had a distant learning team. At the middle school, we had teachers who were dedicated distance learning teachers at the elementary schools. And we had a distance learning, uh, platform. Uh, as you know, uh, the governor, the commissioner, uh, many people have, you know, really. Pushed for in-person learning. And so the distance learning option, um, doesn't exist as, as an option, right? It's in-person learning. But on a rare occasion, there are students who have, uh, needs, whether they're medical, social, emotional. Um, could be, uh, I E P related.
They have to have a disability. So they either have to, you know, uh, have a major, you know, physical or mental, uh. Uh, handicapping condition or they, or their special education. So. We talked about this with our attorney that we have to have an option. We can't say that we don't do distance learning, but we don't have a. Distance learning program for everybody, that there's a certain way that people on a case by case basis. And I think that's what this stride program is about.
So it's not a universal platform. It's for the kids who qualify through a team process and an education plan. And thank you for clarifying that. And so we, uh, use the M P A, uh, it's a state approved. Uh, platform. K to twelve is the, is the company that actually puts it out. The program's called stride. It's sort of a boxed packaged curriculum. Um, it comes with. Aligned curriculum materials. It's a, a platform that's on a computer. It has, uh, its own teachers. Uh, who provide instruction to the kids. If the student has a special education plan that requires additional. Uh, services, then our people provide those services. But we have to have something available and we have a handful of students in the district now. That are going through that, uh, process of qualifying or, or possibly qualifying. Uh, for a distance learning program. And so what we're doing here is getting that all set up. So there's no disruption to anybody's instruction. Uh, and so the, the program we went with had, and it's in the, in the description, there was a three thousand dollar setup. And then each student, and they can be added, uh, as an ongoing, as needed basis. Is another thirty-five hundred dollars. Part of that thirty-five hundred dollars is also a package of materials that the student gets shipped to them. Uh, depending on the grade level and it's a, this program is available K twelve. So it addresses a, a requirement. And it's a, a pretty affordable option, to be honest with you, because some of the options. That other communities have used are three times the dollar amount. We, we happened, the superintendent happened to be talking to another superintendent. Who, um, mentioned this. We circled back and made some phone calls to that district, got some more information, reached out to the. Uh, the, the, the sales consultant and. Felt like this was a strong option and it's a very well priced option with a lot of flexibility. So that's the stride program that we're bringing forward.
Certified teachers are hired by, they're part of the program. It's not our, it's not our teachers.
But if you think about special, you know, if you think about the special ed program. That, you know, team determines placement decisions, right? And that's what this is about. That there may be students that require that for whatever reason, uh, immune. Issues or other issues that a team decides that they require, they can't be educated. Within the specific setting for a variety of, of reasons, this allows that opportunity. So it really is around like a placement decision.
And, and, and the, and the way we came up with thirty-eight thousand dollars, just so if you're wondering how that number came to be, is we said. If we had ten kids in the program, it would be thirty-five thousand dollars. And then we tacked on the three thousand dollar setup. And if we, uh, look like we're gonna exceed ten kids, then I'm just gonna come before you again. But, um, that, and if we stay under ten kids, then we won't use that whole allocated amount.
Again, it's an appropriate use of, you know, addressing the, the needs based on COVID.
Any questions about that?
Any questions, Mr. Murray, Mr. Florio? Mr. Murray?
Uh, I do have a question. So the S R, if you do come back or if we end up with under enrolled, we'll have to figure out if we're gonna reallocate that money. Before, when, when is it? Twenty-four? The S R funds or the R funds when they run out, like when you're supposed to use them by? Okay. Yeah. So it's just something we have to monitor.
September, it's twenty-three for the S R two and A R P's September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. All right. So just something we'll have to monitor if we need to shift funds, but no, I. Not so much questions, I, you know, I. You, I wrote a whole email on this earlier about my support for curriculum as a use of this funding. I think it's a great use of the funding. I help, I think it helps ramp up where we need to. I think it's a great opportunity to, to do that with funds outside of our district. That we've struggled to get in the past to our normal allocation. So. Anything we can continue to put in the curriculum, I'm all in favor of.
And many other districts, um, who are in different financial situation are using a lot of their money for this work. Because we're all faced with the same unfunded legislative mandate of putting in high quality curriculum materials. And so we're not the first ones to do this. This is.
And this will last well beyond COVID, right? So that's, that's the key is, is we're using these funds for, for long. Term vision goals, strategic plan, alignment, et cetera. So, yeah. I appreciate the work.
Mrs. Colonian?
I'm good.
You're good. Mr. Pearson?
Um, thank, thank you for the work you've put into this. It's good, good to see some, some movement in this area. Um, as always, um, question, um, you know, as a school committee, as a body, we're often, you know, presented with these things, you know, approving a curriculum. Whatever, without, without ever having a real opportunity to. Uh, do a deeper dive, like open up K through twelve, K, K to two, or open up three to five. You've explained to us, but I, I don't know what. Any of, you know, without seeing the visual, without understanding what's being taught.
It's a perfect segue because we're actually gonna do that at the next meeting.
Right. So good. Uh, uh, my question, I guess, was as a school committee member, if I wanted to take a peek at the curriculum, just to. Have a better understanding and be confident that I'm approving something, that's, that's, uh, good. Not that I don't trust ride, but I don't trust ride. Um, um, yeah, great. So I, I look forward to the next presentation.
Yeah, we have on our website, um, posted from, from open up a sort of a scoping sequence of the standards. Along with the skills aligned to the different stories and books for the grade levels, three to five and then six to eight. So that's there. Uh, it's their, it's their document, but it is available in terms of looking at the alignment. But, um. If you want to go deeper, even after we presented, uh, everything with E L is actually online and free. So I could easily point you in a few different directions and Mrs. Anzaloni knows it way better than I do. So I know she can support that.
Great.
As, as well. But we, we had a conversation with Mr. Levis and Mrs. Anzaloni coming into that position. You know, really felt it was important to come before the committee and say, you know, give you like a status update. Since we're transitioning. One person out of a job, another person into a job, and there's things that happened. And are happening. It's good to have a good, it's an opportunity to have a status update on curriculum work.
Absolutely. That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions except that I, I find this exciting and, um, I, I'm a hundred percent behind spending. This federal money on curriculum because it's a challenge. We're trying to get it out of your budget.
And then the only other things I'm gonna add and, and, and I'm just gonna kind of put them on your radar is. We are also working on implementation work this year. So for next year on the radar, we're looking at. Implementing high school math and elementary math potentially could be ZERN, could be something else. And there would be a cost associated to that as well. Um. I think on my original document, I gave you a number, but I'm not gonna, I'm gonna back off that a little bit because depending on which direction they go, it could be a different number. But I, I do want you to know or be prepared for the fact that. Um, there's a very good chance I'm gonna come before the group again and do a similar presentation just to let you know. What we could potentially use some of this funding for in preparation for next year.
Hey, I think it's a great use of funds.
May I ask one more? Donna, are you doing any publicity for this on, because I think it's important to let parents know too that we're. I think good information should get out there and, and, you know, since we're on this topic. Um, you know, anything we can do to let parents know that we're investing in curriculum that. This is part of, again, a big, bigger plan for the district to keep improving.
Yeah, the, the, the short answer right now is no, but the long answer is that we have a literacy team. And part of the grant that we got for secondary, uh, E L A. Required us to form a literacy committee, a team. It's a district wide team. And one of the, one of our goals. Is community involvement and, and, and building that goal, there's two or three things we've identified as. Uh, to do's. They probably won't happen truthfully until next year, but the to do's are really about. Inviting the community in. When I say in, it could be figuratively, literally, literally to, to look at what we have and how it's been implemented and how. It's impacted students.
So, and, 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 you know, of course, an email, social media, those are cheap and easy and quick to just push out. But again, just putting out. Positive news is always a good thing. So shameless plug.
I think the only, I'm the only, I do have one question. The materials that RIDE has determined that are high-quality, how many different companies are involved?
So it depends on the content and the age. For example, there's a lot of elementary ELA options, not so many high school options. Matter of fact, Mrs. Angeloni can probably speak to that, because this is part of the reason why the high school team got delayed a little bit. Because there's not as many options, and they felt a little boxed in, so they wanted to kind of pursue a little bit more. There's a ton of math. And so there's a lot of options for math, but not necessarily a good match. So part of what we do with selecting curriculum is we work with Ed Reports, and Ed Reports partners with RIDE. I worked on it when I was in the position now Mrs. Angeloni is. And essentially what they do is they make you really look at your program, your school, your culture, your climate, and identify your priorities. And then make your priorities sort of the litmus test to what you end up with. And instead of looking at it just by price, or, oh, it's free, we're going to get that one. Or the books look really great, we're going to get that one. Make it more about, is this program right for you and your school? Based on your priorities, which we self-identify.
That makes, that's really good to know, because that sort of kind of drills down to Mr. Pearson's question about the variety of different kinds of options on the RIDE site.
And it seems RIDE is supported at Ed Reports, but this is, Ed Reports is a national organization. So it isn't cherry picking from this. Ed Reports is the one that has identified, like a curriculum we had before, Journeys, which, when it was purchased, you know, everybody thought this is wonderful, this is great, it addresses the need. And then when Ed Reports reviewed it later on, realized it wasn't a lot of gaps, and it wasn't aligned to all the standards. So anyways, I just want to be clear though, RIDE has adopted this, but it
Yeah, it just is kind of like a clearinghouse. It just, you, the district makes their choice, basically.
And there are more teachers involved with this than administrators, and their teachers are part of those teams and
The teachers make up almost the entire team. The role of the administrator is really facilitation, and that's it. I mean, Chuck at the high school is the math department chair. He's leading the charge on this. Julie's leading the charge on the ELA.
No, that's great to hear. Good, okay. Any other questions? We're good to, are we ready to motion on this?
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the SIR2 funds as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Anything from the public before I call for the vote? Seeing nothing? All in favor? She votes aye and the opposed. The ayes have it, motion carries by 2 to 0. Moving on to agenda item number 14, School Building Committee Update. That must be Mr. Murray.
Yeah, so I'll try to keep it brief. So a couple weeks ago, some of you may have tuned in, I gave a pretty robust presentation, to say the least. It was over two hours slideshow to council on the ins and outs of the finances of how this would be a viable project. Hopefully, we were able to demonstrate that. I want to thank the finance team and Finance Director Harold Sands for helping facilitate all the numbers and get all that together. I was simply a channel to get that information out as effectively, and I think it, I think it was successful overall. There were some questions by the end, but we're working on answering those. My hope is that we've demonstrated as a building committee that we've met a certain threshold. And that threshold is that the town can support a bond, period. The question really then becomes, do the voters want to support that bond? And I think we've already met that first threshold for council to make their vote. We're going to continue. I have an update on the 8th of November, and I would hope that the committee would tune into that and stay involved in this, because it's getting to critical mass here, that we act as a unit. We act as a unit of five. It's important we all coalesce around this if we want to make it a priority as a committee. And so it always helps to have the support, especially in the room, when we're making these presentations. And I'll just make that plug to the committee. But it's extremely important now, when we get to the 8th, that council gets on board, because the next vote, I anticipate, will be for a resolution for the enabling legislation to move forward for the bond. And then it puts the vote in the, in the community's hands. We had a very good meeting last night as a building committee. I will share the schedule that we've laid out for the next four months or so, five months, with this committee. And, you know, any updates that we make as of, I think, today. I think you'll see that it's well-laid out, and we have a strategic plan on how to move forward. We do now have an owner's project manager. It's a little later in the game than typically required, but we have a non-traditional building committee that quite frankly has a lot of skills, and I'm very lucky to have those people. So Peregrine Group has been brought on board. They are going to help us with the RFP for an architect, because we need to get that going now. Also, a commissioning agent, which we need to get going now. Also, another OPM, should we continue on with the project? Because although Peregrine's brought in for a short time, we also went off the MPA. They're going to help us in a limited capacity now. But should we go to a full-blown construction project, the OPM becomes very, very critical in being the true project manager for the project as a whole. So we need to get them on board. The reason we need to get them all on board is because we're looking at the schedule. And if we want to qualify for the bonuses, which we've committed to, we need to have all those players in place by March. So if we do get an affirmative vote from the voters, we can proceed and make sure we're, continue to be eligible and take advantage of those bonuses, which really makes the finances work. If you looked at the presentation I gave, we are getting upwards of 58% reimbursement. It flips the script entirely for the community. The community is paying the lesser share of the project, and that is very, very important. We're also presented that we would take some bond falloff that's happening in 2023 and 24. And just so that my fellow committee members understand, there's existing bonds out there. It was used to spun school-related debt. Those payments effectively are falling off. And what we're proposing is that we reapply that, those payments, to this new bond, to lower the tax burden on voters. And I think we were at 1.99% increase on the levy, and that's a one-time hit. So I forget what exactly it was on a $400,000 house, but it was, you know, how much per month? But it was, it was something around 10 to 15 bucks, I don't know. So it, it's what I would consider reasonable as a taxpayer, whether, whether the town feels it's reasonable. But, and I also laid out, and this is important for the committee to understand, we're going to have to discuss this during budget cycle, is we do have a maintenance requirement coming up. We're going to have to fund 3% of our appropriations budget. Whether we like it or not, whether the town likes it or not, it is a state mandate. And I express this very clearly to council, that regardless if this bond gets funded or not, this gorilla, elephant in the room is coming next year. And so the bond resolves that, because we can count the interest on the debt towards that requirement. We've already built in some money, which Mr. Martin takes advantage of through his trades and other material and service purchases, to cover the entirety of that maintenance burden. But if we don't fund a bond, we are going to pay approximately $1.2 to $1.5 million anyway. So the taxpayer is going to get hit anyway. So that's important, and I say that publicly, and I say that to you, is that if you dialogue with anybody, make them understand that there is no way really around the fact that you're going to have to fund certain things with schools. It's coming. It's how you want to fund it. Do we want to have a nice new building, educational enhancements, really take, be a leader as a district? Or do we want to patch and repair Band-Aid over the next 20 years and just fold it in? And it's like bleed me slowly. You obviously know where I stand, you know, I'm looking at the numbers. This seems to be, make phenomenal sense to me and others, not just because I'm on the school committee, because as a taxpayer, if I'm looking this objectively, the numbers work. And I'm the first to say, you know me, if I didn't think it worked, I'd sit here and tell you, it just doesn't work. I don't think we should go down this road. But the numbers do work, and a lot of that is due to the work of the committee and Mr. Sands and others who have really looked at the numbers and figured out strategies to make this work. So that is a little longer update than probably I committed to. But I, I think being at this critical stage, I'm hoping my fellow members will stay engaged, stay involved. This project will be a game changer. This project is not like other school-related projects we've done over the past 20 to 30 years, because it's so substantial, so impactful to the district. And the timing is just perfect from a state funding standpoint. And just from its district standpoint, we talk about curriculum, we talk about vans, we're talking about leasing. We're doing a lot of things right now that are setting the stage to set our district up, to jettison into an entirely new future. And this is going to be a cornerstone of that, and I'm really excited about it, obviously. I do not want to come to March and see the voters vote this down. I don't want to come to, say, early December and see council vote it down. I think it needs to move forward. So we need to coalesce around this. I'm asking for everyone's support, including anybody in this room, anybody watching. Now is the time to sort of engage. Alton, do you have any questions you have?
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Florio, anything for Mr. Murray?
I went to a PTA meeting at Tyoga Elementary School, and the parents were fully supportive of the, and that made me feel great. All right, so you have my support, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Mrs. Colonian?
Thank you for the update, and you, you know you have my support. I, if I can make it on November 8th, I will be there.
Mr. Pearson?
Thank you for the update. All good information. I did catch some of your presentation to the council via video. That was very good. They seemed very engaged, so optimistic that, you know, we'll have positive outcome at some point. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Murray, obviously. Anything from the public? Yeah.
I think one point that came up last night, or probably before, but then this coming Monday night, I believe the council is going to have a presentation. Well, there'll be a presentation given to the council by the town manager and the finance director having to do with the funding of the bond. And so I think that'll be interesting. I would encourage people to tune into that. Yeah, actually, that's a good point, because I missed that point. So we have been trying, you know, and I, I don't want to poison the well. I never, I never want to poison the well. We have been trying to get the town to actively engage, to collaborate. And I would say that, you know, we've made, I think that Mr. Marshant and Ms. Mills, the finance, town's finance director and town manager, have engaged to some extent into their, you know, as commending, commending them for attending and trying to work with us in some capacity. They are presenting, I wasn't, I was just kind of made aware of this. I don't know what they're going to present, but I hope it's in the spirit of collaboration, not, you know, something that is going to be counted as a project. My hope is that they'll work with us and find a way to make this happen, not look for ways to not make it happen. I know there's been some dialogue in the past about can we, can we reduce the size of the project? Can we cut the cost? The truth is, and we've said it in our sort of tagline, this is the project. This is the approved project from RIDE. It is not, you know, this is, when they box this up as an approval, it's a project. It's not like you can come in and say, well, I don't want to do the full project, I want to do half a project. I'll do half a building. That's not how it works. It was part of a visioning process, it all fits together in a certain fashion. Once you take it, take a certain piece out, there's a ripple effect. So I'm hopeful, thank you for bringing it up. I'm hopeful that the town will strike a positive tone, they'll be supportive. And I'll say it again, the building committee has been very open in saying, we'll work with you, bring it to the table, walk across the street at any time. I'll make my time available to work the numbers and figure out any way we can make this happen. And if the town doesn't think it can make it happen for some reason, we'd like to hear it and why, before it goes to council, so we can at least come together and have a joint presentation. So I'd like nothing better than the presentation on the 8th to be a joint presentation. I'd like nothing better than when we go for the vote, we're unanimous, so. I know I was long-winded on that subject, but it's a good point, and it's something that has waited on my mind a bit, because I am, I'll say I'm concerned that I haven't been made aware of what's going to happen. But that's out of our control. Stay, keep a positive attitude. We have a positive project. Drive forward.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Anything from the public on this? Okay, I think we can move on to agenda item number 15, which is the FY22 budget update. I believe we have
Quarter one. Everything is on track as we expect it to be. If you have any questions on any line items, please feel free to come, come by and send me an email or come by the office. Be glad to dig into it, give you a little, if you go by the major buckets, we're completely in line in most cases, except for maybe one, where that was the sewer tie-in from Tyoga. Okay, and then finally, you'll see some negative numbers on here. And the reason why those negative numbers are on here is because they indicate voided checks. And so the purchase orders have to be taken out. Okay, so that's why you see negative numbers there. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Sands? Mr. Florio?
Nope. No questions, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Murray?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Mrs. Colonian?
No questions.
And finally, Mr. Pearson?
Thank you for the update. No questions at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sands. Very much appreciated. All right. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm saying it's superintendent's report.
Yeah, okay. Well, I was just going to ask the public. And I don't think, I don't think the public, does the public have anything to add or ask about the FY22 budget update, even though you haven't seen the document yet? Looks good. Okay, you're on next.
I'm going to be brief. I'm going to start with Western Coventry Well Update. So there was an issue we had at the well, our company that does treats for insects and pests, Big Blue Bug. They actually were outside the well, the pump house, the well room. And our, the company that happens to take care of our well, which is Northeast Water, observed them, was concerned about what they were spraying around the area, and informed Mr. Martin, we shut off the well, which meant that we had to transport our students, because it was around 11:30 in the morning, and we only have, we can't flush toilets after an hour. So, long story short, DM came in, inspected, the Department of Health came inspected. Both their inspections were optimistic, but they had to do testing. And so we had to send notices out saying that we couldn't use the water. Over the weekend, we couldn't touch anything, no water, no flushing toilets. By Monday, we were able to flush toilets, use the faucets, wash hands. However, we needed to consume bottled water. And any of our expenses, because that had been asked of me, any of our expenses, we're going to be passing on to the company, Big Blue Bug. It may be $1,000 total, or something like that, we're looking at, according to a conversation Mr. Martin and I had. But we will recoup everything that we spent on this. So just today, we received a letter, because they have to test X number of times, and come back where there's no, the water is not tainted. So I'm going to share, if you could take one, pass it down. This is an email, and I want to thank Mr. Martin. You know, one of the things I think that we expect of our people, and we hope to expect, is flexibility, especially into these times. And Mr. Martin has his plate full all the time. If he just took the transportation, that could be a full-time job. So how we responded to this, and basically he had a conversation with Colin Millar from Department of Health, who was gracious enough to put it in writing, because sometimes they say, wait till you get the formal letter. So this basically says that, you know, we're clear. They didn't find any of the chemical that they were looking for, which I believe is bifenthrin, bifenthrin. So we can go back to using, you know, full use of the water. So, you know, and again, just to highlight, you know, I think I said in an email, but the staff, our new principal at Western Coventry, Dr. Bagley, Ms. Angeloni, Mrs. Angeloni, you know, the staff, the high school staff, were so supportive. It was just, we took a potential crisis, a crisis, and turned it into such a success that day. So I want to go back to that, and just to give you an update. So we're, we will recoup every, any funds that we've spent on this. It's, we believe it's less than $1,000. And so, you know, and we also will have ongoing conversations to make sure, you know, to make sure this doesn't ever happen again. So I don't know if you have any questions on that, but I just wanted to, you know, nice to put this to rest, at least. I just have one, I just want to, I also want to thank you for, you know, taking hand all of this. And I would hope Big Blue Bug would I would hope the big blue bug would know not to spray bifentrin around the wellhead and the wellroom, but, um, well managed. I, I just also want to put out there, you know, this is something on the capital list that well has been on for a while. So it's just, you know, again, somewhat unrelated, but you know, when you talk about being able to flush toilets only for a certain amount of time and, and I know drinkability of that water has been an issue for a long time outside of this. So, but thank you for addressing it and the entire team. So the, the next one I want to jump to is just a COVID update. So, uh, first just, we had a clinic, a vaccination clinic. We'll get, we're gonna continue to run those. We had, um, over a hundred and fifty-three individuals, I believe, uh, received, uh, vaccines last Wednesday. We ran a clinic from 11 to 12 for high school students. We had, you know, less than 10 individuals, um, took advantage of that. We have about 40% of our high school students are not vaccinated. And then when we opened it up at two to five, we had many people from the community come. We had families come for their first vaccinations, which was great to see. Several individuals came for their second and a majority of them, I would say, came for their booster shot. We're gonna have a follow-up clinic on October 27th, once I get the hours and there, there's a time we'll, we'll be doing that. I spoke with, um, uh, the EMA Director Jill DeBraska and, uh, Chief Rick Heiss, and we're gonna be planning, uh, uh, dates probably soon for, assuming that they're gonna be offering vaccinations for five to 11-year-olds. And we'll be offering that school. I'm gonna try to get, definitely get our, you know, our, our nurses have been phenomenal in terms of volunteering and other people. You know, I, I miss Jackard has volunteered, Mr. Martin, Ms. Martin volunteer. We have a lot of staff that volunteer, but I think if we're gonna do the young children, it really would be nice to get, if we could get principals uh, and get our nurses there to do that because, um, it, you know, it'll be a, you know, a stressful situation. But I think being in the school setting, people feel very comfortable. They tell, you know, there were several people, you know, in their seventies and eighties who just were reminiscing. They hadn't, they'd been to school in Coventry and they just felt very comfortable coming into the school setting. So, we will continue to, to support the vaccinations of, of our community uh, as much as we can. We also talked about with, um, what is it? Uh, Moderna?
Yep.
And, uh, Johnson and Johnson that, because we've been solely providing Pfizer because again, the age is 12 and up, but when those become available, we can also shift and offer those vaccines. It may be a little more challenging in terms of the registration process, but we will definitely do that and keep, continue to support the community. But it was great to see 150 individuals. So that was good. There's a, our dashboard, we updated every week, so, um, you know, in the week of October 1st, which was, um, you know, on a Friday, we had a, that week, zero staff and nine students that had tested positive. Now, people may be in schools and you may hear differently. However, this is when they're confirmed, right? So when we get confirmed, we, we put them in here. Uh, this past week, uh, on October 8th, um, we had three staff and seventeen students. Um, so, you know, Coventry is, um, I think we're above the curve in some areas. You know, we, I was listening to the Wesley Superintendent and, uh, talking about the test to stay and they're gonna pilot it. But he was talking about having like 12 cases, 13 cases in the district, right? We're definitely not there. But we are seeing it leveling off. We hope that we continue to see the leveling off. And we just continue to monitor it. It's much more challenging. You know, in the past, I used to send you emails. I'm, I'm not able to do that because the way we're getting informed now is different than we were before. I received something from the Department of Health and it will say at the end of a week or a day, these students were identified or this staff was identified. And there's information because it's coming so fast. I wanna, you know, I don't want to put on misinformation. So if I can find a way to do that, because I, I used to share with the school committee every single time there was a class put out or a student. But the way it's happened this year and the way we get the information, it's been much more challenging. So it's not that I'm not trying to, to communicate effectively. It's just the information's not coming to me the same way. So, but we will continue and, you know, over the weekend, we update our, our dashboard for the previous week, so we can continue to monitor it. And then, yeah.
Uh, I just wanted to ask you something.
Go ahead.
Only because I get, I've gotten a few phone calls from constituents
Yep.
concerning the high school and the half-days.
Yep.
That's on a temporary basis.
Correct.
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 Because I know I read your report
Correct.
this Sunday. It said that I wanted to put that out there, that it is a temporary basis.
Yeah, and I talked to Ms. Maycumber about it, but we, you know, I still want to see the, the numbers going down. I mean, I have my own hypothesis, but it doesn't, I mean, I'm not a scientist. I'm not a doctor. But yeah, it's not, you know, last year, I mean, I think when we did that, we said that, that it's, and it, and it's not a half-day. So that's another misnomer.
That's right.
It's, it's, it's. They leave at 12:30. So, um, but it's definitely something that we're looking at. Um, and Ms. Maycumber and I talked about it last week. But then seeing the numbers increase a little bit more, you know, I, I want to be cautious, but I did say I think we're gonna reevaluate it like every couple of weeks and we're monitoring this. So yes, but it's definitely not.
Okay, no, I, I just wanted to bring that up in the public. So.
Right.
So the public is.
And it, and we're not the only ones dealing with it, but I think, and, and how that transpired, and I think we talked about it publicly was, that we had been having conversations with the Department of Health. I, I had two conversations that week myself with, with one of the doctors, two epidemiologists, one of the nurses, looking so specifically at, at the time, Black Rock was having a lot of issues.
That's right.
Right? And if you notice on, on, on the dashboard, um, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely leveled off, right? But at the high school there, we had some internal systems too that we've been able to refine and, and, and communication. And, and Rideau will be the first to admit at the time also that they were maybe delayed in terms of getting information back because people are inundated. Remember last year, everybody hired, Rideau did the big push.
Yeah.
And they hired like 300 individuals, right? But they had, they reduced that this year. Nobody was expecting this. So we're all kind of hit. You know, we, we were set up more. We had time to prepare for it. You know, I definitely wasn't expecting this. You know, I said that probably, I don't, I don't like wearing a mask. I'm tired of it. But it's something we have to do and it isn't gonna, you know, let's, let's hope this is not gonna be forever. But, so we made that decision in, in, in consultation with the Department of, of, uh, Health, just like we did those two days, those two days. You know, we needed those two days to, um, to make sure we could do all the contact tracing. I was concerned, you know, we had athletic teams playing and we get emails all the time and we get them late. We find out that our, our soccer team played against, uh, you know, eight days ago, played against a team that had two positive cases. Well, if you're only quarantining for seven days, right? So then they say, we strongly encourage you to, to get all the players tested, but we can't mandate that, right? So information, we still struggle with information, the flow of information. But we, we did those two days because we didn't want to put other teams in that position. We didn't want to find out that, oh, we had a student that was close contact that ended up becoming positive and then we played Mount Pleasant, right? So we canceled athletics for that whole weekend and we didn't till, practices until that Wednesday. I believe that Wednesday, we were able to allow kids or two, was it Thursday? Wednesday. So we did that, you know, and we don't, we didn't do that in a vacuum. There's a lot of conversation. And now we've put internal systems in place in the high school where I don't think we'll get in that situation where we'll, we'll be delayed in the contact tracing. So, again, we don't do this in a vacuum. I know it was a drastic move, but I think it's, it was an appropriate move at the time and, um, we don't have a lot of options, you know? But we want to see this go down. Rideau has said in the last conversation I always had, they're, they're looking like the end of October. Early November, they think we're gonna see a, 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 a big drop-off, right? And again, we still are pushing. I can't make anybody get, you know, definitely students, and we talked about that, you know, earlier, that we can't make families get their children vaccinated. That's their choice, but unvaccinated individuals, there's no way around it, at least in the near future. They're still gonna have to quarantine, right? So, so, um, but it, yeah, that's my long-winded way of saying yes.
Thank you.
And then the third part about the, the, uh, COVID is that we've made some modifications. We know that younger children are being put out, the elementary school. I've seen emails, maybe you've seen them, where a parent says, my, my child's been out. You know, we, we did reduce the quarantine from 10 days to seven days. But a parent will say, my child was out, then someone else, now they're back out again, right? And it's frustrating and I get it. So we looked at what other districts are doing. We had a conversation with, uh, two of the, um, kind of, uh, people that run the COVID unit at the Department of Health. And we wanted to look at how we could put in some protocols that might, instead of sending a whole class out, might allow us to send out like a smaller group within the class. And so what we did is grades three to five, we've, um, incorporated where they kind of break up into little pods within the class. So instead of kids sitting in rows or, you know, two kids here, three kids, we have them, say if there's 25 kids in the class, they'll sit in five groups of five. And so the whole idea is, and we're trying this out, we're gonna collect data on it, but we have to do something. I know, I, I think it, we know that most of these kids that go out aren't coming back positive, right? We have that data. But it's what the protocol is. So what we're doing now is hoping that if in that pod, there's a student that is positive, we'll only need to send out those four other students, not the entire class, right? And that's what we're hoping will happen. Because you have to be next to somebody within three feet if you're masked for 15 minutes cumulatively, right? So there's no perfect method to this. We're not gonna have like GPS on students, but we, we felt it's important. I felt it's important to, to at least try. We found out that other districts are doing. My gut feeling is that other districts are not, the kids are not always three feet apart, but they're just saying, you know, we're not, we're not gonna send out the class. We'll, we'll identify a few kids sitting around them. And I think we're very honest about this. We look at it and say it's really hard. One area I think that we kind of pushed back a little bit is the assumption we're making during recess is we can't really control kids. So we've been saying during recess, we're gonna view it as these kids are within three feet, whereas we know most other districts are saying, unless we know two kids are hanging out at recess, they always hang out, we're gonna leave kind of recess off limits and we're gonna look at just the class time, you know? So we're trying this out. We feel, we hope this will be effective. If it's not, then we'll be the first to admit that it, it didn't work. Um, so we're trying that now because we recognize the fact that, you know, kids cannot, young kids cannot get vaccinated. And it is tough on them. And one thing we've realized, as hard as it is and our teachers, you know, it's a challenge, you know, um, you know, I, I, I know, you know, Ms. Tyree's here. If you're, if you have three kids home, you know, for whatever reason, and you're trying to teach the other 20 some odd kids and, and you're trying to, you know, still you have these other kids kind of zooming in, especially kindergarten. We know it's not perfect. It's very, very challenging, right? It's a lot of work too. But the goal is if we can keep kids in longer, more kids in, I mean, I think there's not a person out there that will say that, um, it's the best thing is when kids are in front of their teacher and when teacher's in front of kids. So we're trying this. It's not perfect. But that's something else that we're trying again to try to look at accommodate. So, that's the, 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 the COVID update. I don't know if there's any questions about that. And then the last one is, and I put it on here. I know that there was an article in the paper today, performance audit update. The council approved the performance audit the other night, right? And I've said this all along, like the rules have changed this whole process, right? You know, it was supposed to be we do ours, they do theirs. We get back together, we talk about it and, um, and RFP had put out, right? So I don't, you know, it's, it's, I'm not saying it's water over the dam now, but, um, but there was a statement, I do want to clarify, and I wrote to you in my update. I, it was clear that I don't have the authority to say that we're going forward. And I know Ms. Patino didn't say, speak for the committee. I don't want to put words in your mouth that we're gonna go forward. I did say that I met with Alan Pennington and I thought he was an honorable person and I think we can make it work. As long as we have a say in that steering committee, um, and, you know, I did talk to Mr. Anderson. He's not here right now, but he said the council wants to pay for some. They can do what they want to do. So, you know, I, I don't know the thoughts. I put it on here really to hear the thoughts of the, the committee. I'm willing to do whatever and make it work. I'm willing to, you know, um, but to put, to, to get the heels in to make sure we get what we need. And I think the key is through the steering committee, having the right people on the steering committee. We can have, I think we're gonna have four or five members, um, that will vet, you know, we're gonna have to do a lot of the work. They don't know the standards. They have admitted, Mr. Penn, he's never done this type with school departments because schools typically don't ask for this. Usually it's an agenda. It could be looking at transportation, could be at food service. They pick an agenda. They've never looked at this. But I do believe he's honorable. I do believe he's not like a company guy. I believe he wants to do the right thing. And I, that's why I think it's important for us to have the right people on a steering committee, which means, uh, people that are invested in this community, people to have a history with Coventry. You know, we may need, you know, someone, you know, educator, somebody that's, you know, from town would be helpful too. Um, you know, so anyways, I just wanted to put that on the agenda. You know, I don't know the, the choice. I feel like, I, I believe we should cooperate with him, but again, it's not my, my, my decision, but I did share with you, I, I, I felt much better after I had a Zoom meeting with him. And I, my big concern was, I don't think you put enough money in here to do it, uh, due diligence to the schools. And he was adamant that he felt that he did build it in. So, um,
Any, um, comments about the performance audit or anything like that? Sure. You're fine?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I, no, I appreciate you putting on the agenda. I, I actually did call the superintendent because one thing that struck me, I did, I had other obligations tonight, but I heard the meeting after and the town council president said, oh, I called the superintendent. I called the chair and they were fine with this. And I'm like, wait a minute. We speak as a body. Right. So one of my concerns is always that we all have equal authority to weigh in on this. And I, my understanding, and when I thought we did, um, in that joint meeting and the, and the general consensus is we had hesitancy. But yet the council chose to continue on basically despite that and move forward. And I think, you know, my biggest thing is, and I think actually it was Councilwoman Shockley who said it best is, if you're looking for ways to increase efficiencies in town, in town, this is the most inefficient way to do this process. And, and that is the truth, you know? They put out an RFP without consulting schools at all, put it on the market, which like in a, I have issues with the RFP as a whole because I felt like it just didn't, I didn't think it was equitable even to bidders because I didn't think it was specific enough. Then that brought us to a meeting to discuss the award of said contract, which we had no involvement with. And we've talked for years about collaboration and doing this together and yet didn't back off it to say, you know what, maybe we should go back and now weave this. And it's, again, it's not to poison the well. It's not to throw, you know, wrenches in the system of our relationship with council, but I think they need to understand like, if they really want us collaboratively at the table and to do this as a town, you need to bring us to the table. I don't know how the members feel about that, but I feel very strongly about that. If you want to go off on your own and do what you want to do, it's at your own risk because I'll be straight up is that I agree. I don't think there's enough money in there to do all the educational assessments. And while I think we should be cooperative, I don't think we have the time as a school district right now to be shepherding somebody who doesn't know the standards through what RIDE requires and everything else. That's what's gonna happen. I mean, that, but that definitely. And if we can't, and FX timelines, I would say tough, right? They needed to build in enough money to do that. That's not on us because we would have said early on, listen, this is the standard. This is what they need to bid on. So they may not issue a change order, but what will happen, I can see this already. It'll get thrown on us and then it'll be us causing timeline delays. And then if a report comes out and we feel it's deficient, then I can foresee problems because I'm not gonna accept it as a school committee member, speaking for myself, if I feel it's deficient. And then it's gonna cause a rub there later on. So I say all this just to kind of preemptively, I'm not looking to poison a well. I'm not looking against this. I do believe Mr. Penning, is it Pennington? Was a very straightforward, honorable person for what he was proposing based on an RFP he was given. That doesn't make it right. That doesn't make the process right. So I'm obviously very passionate on this. Again, it's not to cause a rift with council, but I think there are times you need to call a bad process out. It was a bad process. It is still a bad process, in my opinion. I do believe we should cooperate. They have a right to do whatever they want. They can award whatever they want. It's, it's town money. It's their money. We're a department of the town. But when the report comes out, I just, I truly hope it's a, it's a a real performance audit because that's what people deserve, including myself as a taxpayer and everybody up here deserves a real performance audit that we can implement. Or have something to dig into and, and have use of. Uh, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars is still a significant amount of money if we get nothing out of it. I would much rather spend 200,000 and actually have implementable strategies that we can, can use as a district. So, I know I've talking, taken a lot of airtime on this, but I, you know, you could tell by the questions I asked that night, I have strong concerns about, you know, how this performance will be done. I, I really do hope it, you know, I wish it well and hope for the best, but we'll see what comes out of the backend. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, Mrs. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mrs. Colonian, did you have anything?
I, I think Mr. Murray said it very well because I, I had some issues with it too. It was a messed up process, so to speak, because they didn't even, like, they said, oh yeah, we collaborated, but they just sent something out. It had nothing to do with what we needed. So, but I feel the same way he does.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
I was trying to get back to my thought because as, as Mr. Murray and Mrs. Colonian were talking, a lot of words I can't say out loud came into my head. No, I mean, it's agreed upon. The, the process was upside down, completely upside down. You don't issue an RFP and, and go out for bid without gathering your requirements first. If I ran a project like that at work, I think I'd get fired. But that said, you know, the cat's out of the bag. So the deed has been done. The RFP is approved. You know, we want a good audit, of course, and we want something that meets our requirements. So having a voice in that steering committee, I think is important. But at the same time, you know, we should also be conscious of the fact that if we have to do a scope reduction on our end of, of what we're expecting, then we have to do a scope reduction. We just be very open and transparent about it. It's like, we asked for this and we're not getting it. So we'll focus on these things that are, that are being done. But, but identify, you know, if we have ability to amend the, the final, final reports, say, look, here, here's what we didn't look at. And this, this should be looked at in the future. I think a curriculum audit was something we, we felt as a, as a committee was needed. So maybe that's something we have to think about. And, you know, good night for talking about curriculum. But a deeper curriculum audit, is that something we need? That, that's a, that might be a question for the future because we're clearly not going to get it in a, in the performance on it. So, so again, in an effort not to, not to poison the well and not to cast too much shade on, on what's being done. At the moment, we're not paying for it. So let's work with what we have and get the best out of it. Being conscious of the fact that we, we don't want to be perceived as the barrier to getting it done. We don't want to be perceived as the barrier to getting it done in a timely manner. And we don't want to be perceived as, oh, we have too many requirements or we're asking too much. You get what you pay for. This is what they paid for. Just be, if it doesn't meet our expectations, we just, we just say that at the, the end of the game. That's all.
Thank you. I don't have much to add, except that I thought all the comments were thoughtful and pretty much say how we felt as a committee. Again, it was already a done deal when we had our joint meeting with them. And so, again, we, we tried to, you know, put the best spin on it. And I think when these people come to, to here and start the, the, the work, it is crucial that the steering committee has people on it that can provide some information that this company clearly does not have a lot of experience in. And how they take that. And, and I mean, even if they write a report and said they have, they weren't able to look at this, this, and this, that the school steering committee people thought were important, then at least it's stated. We don't have to, you know, we can criticize whatever comes out if, if it looks like it, there wasn't a deep enough dive and some of the things that we were looking for. And so I'm always the optimist, always hopeful that there'll be, that, that the money is being spent a finite amount of money, maybe it could have been more, but the money that is going to be outlaid will in fact be spent wisely in the best possible way by this company. So, and I have to trust that your meeting with Mr. Pennington went well in the sense that he was at least willing to work with you and, and basically not come off as being the know-it-all arrogant kind of person that, you know, certain things were not going to get done probably. And I, I don't think the council or the town manager was willing to say we're going to really be able to change or what of this, this RFP. So I think we're going to be stuck with what can, we can buy for $130,000. I mean, that's what it comes down to. So like I said, I'll try to remain positive and hope for the best. I know there was a time crunch. There was definitely, the train started out of the station without us and there wasn't much we could do to really stop it. So we had, we just have to make the best of it. So.
Do, do we have a sense of how the steering committee is going to be selected? Have they?
Well, I think we, you know, I had a brief meeting with Mr. Marsh on Wednesday. We meet every Wednesday morning and, you know, I, I've said all along, I mean, I think we need to be able to, you know, we're a large part of the, the, you know, people will always say, you know, you're 80%, 70% of the budget. So I think we need to be well represented and we need to be able to pick that. So he was saying like four and four, like the Mr. Pennington was saying like, you know, eight to 12 people, individuals, you know, Mr. Marshon was looking at maybe four, four or five represents, representatives from our side, four or five from, from, from their side. So you know, my concern was if the council just picked, you know, like we've been in other things where the church says they get to pick certain things. I feel like we should have control, say, control, total control of who represents our side. So, so I'm comfortable with that, that we can pick, you know? You know, it looks like there could be, and it was mentioned this to Ms. Patno, it looks like there could be, they might have one council member on it. So, you know, if that's the case, then, then we should have one school committee member. I think the key with this is just time, right? Having the time. So because they're expecting to do this very quickly, three months. And, you know, I think the steering committee's job is to, to do exactly that, to try to steer the process. You know, I, I want it to be a fair and objective process. And it, you know, we didn't go into this saying, we expect everything to come back perfect and glowing. We want to identify, you know, I think the, the difference is the council, they're new. Ms. Mills is new, Mr. Marshon's new. So they just want to get stuff back at a level and, and, and been able to develop a plan for it. We've been here for a long time. I mean, you know, there, we want a deeper dive. I think Mr. Pearson had said, you know, like a deeper dive in things. I'm just not looking for these topical, a lot of the stuff, you know, a lot of things we know, you know? We know about our facilities, you know? Doesn't mean that people aren't busting their butt trying to take care of them, but we know they're in a state of repair. We know some other areas in our, in our, in our, in our buildings or in our, our systems, but so I think the steering committee, you know, will have a say in that, but it's, people need to be willing to invest the time and, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. We've got a lot of other things going on. School building project, budget's going to be coming up. So I mean, there's a lot going on. So that's my concern is to push to get it done in three months. You know, I think their needs might be different than our needs. And so I think the key is how do we blend those so that we can both get something out of it that's purposeful that we can use. And yeah, we may find that there's other areas we want to invest more in later on. You know, I agree with that. It's like, you know, the key will be figuring out what those things are that we really want to focus on if we have to, you know, refine the scope. So, and again, it all takes time.
Okay. Anything else from the committee? Anything from the public on this, on anything from Mr. Levis's report? Okay. So I think we can move on to citizens' comments. Are there any comments from the citizens' gatherings?
They're all ready to go and go to bed.
20 minutes passed.
Okay. I think we're ready to schedule the next meeting. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, make the motion, schedule next meeting for October 28th, 2021, at the Coventry Resource and Senior Citizens Center at 6:00 PM with an agenda of maybe 10 hours.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? The eyes have a motion carries and I have looks like 9:21 as a adjournment. Is there a motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you everyone for your attention and for coming.